To call this meeting. To the Board of Trustees meeting. This is January 24, 2023. The time is 7:00 P.M. Silence your cell phones. Paula, would you do a roll call, please, of the trustees?
You bet. Mayor Fay here. Pastor Cobb here. Pastor Hilton Higa.
Here.
Pastor Jenkins. Pastor LaCretzi.
Here.
Pastor Rowe.
Here.
Pastor Swisher.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the pluggable agents.
Apologies.
As you came in, there was a clipboard on which you could enter your name and address and topic about what you'd like to address the trustees. So if you haven't completed that, please do. And you have before you an agenda for tonight's meeting. Does anyone have any? Changes? Any of the trustees have changes or recommendations for the agenda? Hearing none, I would accept the motion to pass the agenda.
Make the motion to pass the agenda.
LaCretzi Cobb. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And then in the packet, there's also the consent agenda. And it has minutes from our prior meeting and minutes from the advisory boards, the Town Park Report, the Recreation Supervisor Report, the Univista Tree Board Work Plan for 2022. Also included are appointments to committees or to advisory groups. So there's reappointing Joy Dupre and Jennifer Wright as regular members to the Beautification Advisory Board. And then, hang on for a second here. For the Recreation Advisory Board, reappointing Marcus Trustee and Gary Crowder and Danielle Ryan. And we really want to thank those people for all the extra time they put into serving the town of Univista. There are also an authorization to purchase vehicles during this year. Those vehicles have already been budgeted for, but we're just allowing the administration to purchase the vehicles whenever it's possible. And then there are several grant resolutions in regard to grants. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Just in the Recreation Supervisor Report, I was really excited to see the entwining of BBSC with the direct department for the trail maintenance and things like that. BBSC is a great organization and it's really nice to be able to see them to do more with town. So I just thought that was interesting and wanted to call that out. I think it's exciting.
And that's the Univista Single Track Coalition?
Yes, sorry. Yep.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Row Swisher? And all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Paula, I was gathering the clipboard. Okay, there are four names, four names on here. And I'd like to start with Elaine and Thomas Brown, who would like to address the trustees about radon. Hello, please. You'll have three minutes each. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Elaine Brown. I live at 230 Brookdale Avenue in Univista. And thank you very much, Mayor and trustees, for allowing me to talk about radon, which is a radioactive gas that occurs naturally in the earth. It comes up into the atmosphere and doesn't really do any harm or anything like that until you put a building on top of the earth where radar, where radar comes up through it. And that's when you start having problems. Because radon is a cancer-causing gas. You can't smell it. You can't taste it. You can't see it. So you don't even know it's around. What you can do is have a test done in your house, underneath your house, in a crawl space or wherever the, wherever you can put it. And the test will let you know after about three days how much radon you have within your house. Test for three days and then you send it off to a lab. The lab then will conduct their test and give you back their results. The, the radon level that's acceptable is four picocuries. I don't know what that is, but it's their level measurements by the EPA. And if it's four PCIs, then that's acceptable. It's not great, but except, except acceptable. They would prefer to have it lower than that. We did a test and our test, as you can see on the handout that we gave to you, our test was 98 PCIs. And that's pretty high. And so in order to bring that down below four PCIs, you have to have mitigation done. If you do not have a mitigation done, you can't sell your house. Or you can't sell your house. You have to have mitigation done to get the PCI under four. And once we did this, we had a mitigation done. And what they do is they come in and go down to the lowest level of your house. They put in a pipe. They dig a hole and put a pipe in and they drill a hole out of the house, out of the foundation and up outside and up the wall above your roof. They have a fan and on the outside to bring the gas up into the pipe to go out into the atmosphere, which doesn't hurt anything like that. And anybody or anything, it just kind of dissipates and goes off into the air. So the other page where it's, what shows is what radon is, what it can do to people that smoke or that does not, they do not smoke, what, what happens, you know, and all that.
Paul, now, Tom, do you have a specific message for us?
I'll do that.
Tom, we'll do that. I just wanted to give you information about what radon is and what it is in the house. And it, radon does not come out of your house unless you do the mitigation because it can't go through the roof. It just stays within your home. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, trustees, I'm Tom Brown, 230 Brookdale. I'm on several boards, state and the town, and I'm speaking on behalf as a citizen and not on any of the boards. What I want to talk about a little bit is that radon is pervasive in Colorado. And also I wanted to thank Mayor and the Town Administrator for taking my email a few weeks back about this. It's pervasive about Colorado and we have one of the highest rates in the state. And it's something that we think we need to approach as a, as a town, given that we had results that were 24 times higher than the acceptable level by the EPA. It's a high risk for long-term lung cancer, as Elaine alluded to earlier. So what I was thinking about as I went through the process, what are some things that we can do? Chaffey County Environmental Health does have a radon program, relatively small funding, but they do provide free testing kits for people. So you can request them. And, and actually there is a state mitigation program for folks that don't have the income or the resources to actually mitigate for radon. But to move into the processes as a town, what can we do that can be low cost or minimal cost? That can start to help our folks around here. We probably have 60 to 70% of the population of the town likely needs some sort of mitigation. But we just don't know because we haven't done enough testing to be able to confirm that. But in Denver alone, it's 50% they assess that. Higher if we've got more radon living here in the mountains. Some of the solutions that I was thinking that are possible proposed recommendations, the solutions, is to maybe establish a radon awareness program in Univista using bb.com as a, as a ability where folks can go to, to find that information. A lot of folks don't understand it. They mix it up with carbon oxide. It's confusing to a lot of folks. It's something that, that we could do with the Environmental Health Director. Relatively easy, cheaply, and people can get that information. Second, ensure all BB public buildings have been tested. I don't know if they are. They may have been and if tested and if they do show radon, then let's take some efforts to mitigate. It's relatively inexpensive. It's not totally cost-free, but it's something that I think will help our employees, most within the town, recreation center facilities where people are living and not working. Third, we may want to consider about having our businesses tested and assist our businesses as part of their licensing processes to at least test for radon so that they know what, what actually is occurring within their business areas. Fourth, we may want to look at short and long-term rentals. Folks that don't really have the control of, of the radon testing and the radon effects that may be, that may be having those impacts. So it might be something we may, we may want to have our rental community or our landlords test for radon and report those tests out and if possible, have them mitigate it as best as possible. And last, we may need to look at our subdivisions. And again, I'm speaking not as a planning commission. We may be looking at our subdivisions or work with Chaffey County to change our codes that may allow us to have radon mitigation built into those programs, into those homes before, before we, before they even begin construction so that we don't have to deal with post mitigation. We deal with it before, before the folks move in and before the radon issues come, become apparent. So that's what we had and we just wanted to give you our experiences and, and our concerns and some ideas, at least for you all to think about. So thanks for hearing us out. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, Paula Andrews.
Thank you. I'm trying to be quick. Paula Andrews, 27999, county number 301, DV. I've been working on the process for about 10 months now, from which time I've learned that most people who stand up here asking for something or want some feedback on something, stop by this evening to say thank you for approving the town as an applicant for the grant two weeks ago. I know there was some healthy debate and great questions about whether that was the right thing to do over the holiday period. And it's on the consent agenda, so we're moving on. Also wanted to give you a quick update that Joseph and I were on a pre-application call with DOLA last week and they informed us that they've now received $700 million of LOIs related to the grant program. And so they are shutting it down for any future applications. And so what you do does make a difference. If you decided to punt and kick this forward for another couple of months, we would have been cut off from applying for that grant. So thanks for making the decisive action and we'll be back later. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Philippe.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. A quick question or proposal for the post office issues. As you know, not having mail for several weeks is a problem. I would like to thank the people who, the employees at the mail office because it's very tough for them, operating many of our staff 50%. And they have had a lot of critiques of people. So don't critique them too much because we may lose them also and it could get worse. But some proposals or whatever, I know we are trying to get in people from elsewhere. That's a good system, it's just temporary work. We have people for six months, they're gone and we fill in a hole. Now we have people coming in for a month or whatever from Colorado Springs. So what will happen within a month? We may be in the same boat. We know the issue probably is affordable housing. So that will not be resolved tomorrow. So we need to find a solution to try to keep the people here or to try to get the work done with less people. And I'm thinking, for instance, today, in normal circumstances, we are serviced six days a week, mail, right? That's what we normally do. Maybe if you only have, have the people, you only service them three times a day, a week, or two times a week. At least the people will know that they will get their mail twice or three times a week. And that means that the post office related to carriers, for instance, can operate at half the capacity that they normally have. So I think we need to find solutions on how to then to get the work done with less people by reorganizing, by making sure that people are able to do different work, carriers as well as sorting. Because I don't think, otherwise we would be without a problem a month from now. We will be, we are in this situation and I think six months from now that we will be in the same situation. So we need to find a solution which is workable or you find a continuous stream of people who will come in from elsewhere every month, every two months. Or you reorganize, that you say, well, distributing mail will only be at half capacity twice or three times a week. And people, I think the residents will be happy because today they didn't have mail for two weeks, three weeks or whatever. And they didn't know when they would get them. So if they would be serviced twice or three times, I think it's a lot better than having no mail at all. Thank you.
Oh, Philippe. Philippe, would you please spell your name and address?
Oh, sorry.
For the record.
This address, 2974 Dillon Run in Univista.
So Paula, do you have the spelling of his last name?
And I'll take it from the thing I'll get it. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Philippe. Okay, and thanks to all of you for coming to speak with us. We do appreciate getting public comments and we do take them seriously. Oh, yes, you're right. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Michael, do you see anyone that's?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised or there's nothing in chat. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Okay, we will move on to the business items for tonight. First of which is an appointment to the Chaffey County Housing Authority. Lisa.
Becky's not here.
She is on Zoom.
Okay.
And so I think that Michael was going to go ahead and allow her to talk.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Excellent. So thank you so much for giving us space on your agenda tonight. Pretty easy housekeeping item, I do believe. You all may remember that when the Housing Authority was formed, the town appointed Vista has the expectation to appoint two board members to the Chaffey Housing Authority Board and an alternate member. That alternate member is a non-voting member unless one of your appointed members is unable to attend a meeting, in which case that alternate steps in and can take that voting member's seat. Historically, since our inception, those alternates have been the administrators of the jurisdictions that we serve. And with Philip Puckett's change in duties and with Lisa's arrival, it is appropriate to recommend to this Board of Trustees that Lisa Parnell Rowe be appointed to the alternate seat on the Chaffey Housing Authority Board of Directors. And so that's what I'm here to do tonight is to make that recommendation, answer any questions you may have and move forward from there.
Are there any comments or questions from trustees?
I think I'll do a great job.
I'm excited. Well, when I was doing my, my dissertation for my master's program, I was actually on how zoning or it mixes affect housing prices and so housing is kind of a thing for me. I enjoy that topic and certainly, certainly a topic. So I'm excited to be a part and hear more what's going on and be that alternate.
Very good. Should we have a motion to appoint Lisa as the alternate member of the Chaffey Housing Authority?
I'll make that motion.
You?
Second.
So we're Swisher, LaCretzi. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you and I look forward to working more closely with Lisa and caring for the good work of our Housing Authority. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the first reading of the Sanger de Cristo Electric Association Franchise Agreement. This has been in process for quite a few months and we're glad to be getting it in front of you as part of the, part of the packet. So the trustees should feel free to, to comment on it. But I would like to read ordinance number 01, series of 2022. This is an ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the town of Univista, approving a franchise with Sanger de Cristo Electric Association Incorporated to furnish, sell and distribute electricity to the town and to all residents of the town and repealing and replacing ordinance 4-1997, codified as Chapter 5, Article 2 of the Univista Municipal Code. Whereas Sanger de Cristo Electric Association Incorporated has held a franchise and operated an electric system in the town by agreement since at least 1997 and the current agreement has expired. Whereas the Board of Trustees wishes to renew the agreement, replace the prior agreement and repeal the Chapter 5, Article 2 of the Univista Municipal Code. Whereas pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute Sections 31-32-101 through 103, the town may grant a franchise by ordinance after statutory notice and publication requirements have been met and after two readings of the ordinance. Whereas, as evidenced by Publishers affidavits, the statutory notice requirements have been met. And whereas this ordinance has been read twice, this is looking forward, first on January 24, 2023 and next on February 14, 2023. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Trustees of the town of Univista, Colorado, that Section 1. The franchise agreement for the provision of electric power to the town of Univista, Colorado, by and between Sanger de Cristo Electric Association Incorporated and the town of Univista, attached hereto and incorporated herein, is approved in substantially the form of attached. And the mayor is authorized to execute the same on behalf of the town. Section 2, Chapter 5, Franchises and Communication Systems. Article 2, Electric Franchise of Univista Municipal Code is repealed and that article is reserved. Section 3, Severability. If any article, section, paragraph, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held to be unconstitutional or invalid for any reason, such decision shall not affect the validity or constitutionality of the remaining portions of this ordinance. The Board of Trustees hereby declares that it would have passed this ordinance and each part or parts irrespective of the fact that any part or parts be declared unconstitutional or invalid. Section 4, Safety. This ordinance is deemed necessary for the protection of the health, welfare and safety of the community. Introduced, read, adopted and ordered, published as 14th day of February 2023. This ordinance shall become effective 30 days from publication to be signed by myself as mayor and attested to by Paula Barnett. So that is the first reading of the ordinance. Is there a staff report, Lisa?
I just want to give you a summary of my written report that's included in your packet. One thing that I want to start by saying is 25 years is a long time. And that was the term of our last contract with San Francisco Electric. And that's also one of the reasons that we ended up looking at this a little bit longer. That was one of the things that we talked through and worked through. 25 years, the last time it was signed was in, was in 1997. So we on October 25th, of course, had our work session and we invited San Francisco to come in. We had several public come in as well that had interest in seeing some renewable energy transparency. And so that has also been looked at. In December timeframe, shortly after that, we had proposed some changes, but there were some interruptions due to some illnesses amongst key, key people that are involved in this. And so in December, the franchise fee was looked at and was said, hey, you know, we're going to need to not be doing the friend, we're not going to pay the franchise fee. And so town worked with, with Sanger de Cristo and their lawyers and our lawyers. And we rolled up our sleeves and looked at this. And I outlined, there's a lot of changes really went from four pages to, I think, 14. But there was also some definitions and table of contents, some things that were necessary and a lot of things, again, that got changed in 25 years. The three major things are that it now includes a section that addresses the Section 6.3, which addresses the renewable energy. How this will work is that Sanger de Cristo will provide us their annual warranty给你们 to the state. And they'll give us a cover letter with that as well that talks about any requirements that they've met and what the state said in the findings. And we also have opportunity, as long as we give them 30 days notice, to have them come talk to us as well. And then as to the length of term, we've negotiated to a 15-year term. I think that's very good. We also added a section, Section 13.1, which provides a mechanism for either party to make changes during the term, to come to the table and talk about those. And then there is a slight change in the franchise fees. Those were reassessed and looked at comparatively to other municipalities. Again, 25 years, our franchise fee was rather low compared to what Again, 25 years, our franchise fee was rather low compared to what the average was. So, those are the changes. We're, of course, recommending approval, but you're not approving tonight. What we're looking for is a motion to set this for the second reading on February 14, 2023. And we do have, we do have Paul Erickson here of Sangre de Cristo, along with, I think we have Tri-State here as well. And so I'll let them do a quick, give you their thoughts, if that's okay. And then you can ask any questions that you might have.
How do you miss yours?
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. I'm Paul Erickson. I'm the CEO of Sangre de Cristo Electric. I've been with SDCEA now in that capacity since the dawn of time, 2006. It just feels like the dawn of time. And, and we did bring a posse here today. I wasn't expecting this much interest on the part of some of our folks, but if I could regale you a little bit with some introductions. We have the chairman of our board, Joe Radesky. We've got our newest director, Blake Bennett. And Blake represents the Town of Bina Vista. The town has its own district on our board, and so the town has a board seat, if you will. And Blake is elected to the board, just like all of our other directors. We have our head of communications here, Chris McGinnis. We've got our brand newly minted COO, our chief operating operations officer, Gary Kelly, fresh off the boat from Arizona. And we've got Mike Allen, who's kind of, you all know Mike. He does all of the unassigned things, the boots on the ground, the energy services, and the consulting company and everything else. We also have our new, not so new, manager of finance, Sarah Kreitz. So, boy, that's, I hope this, I hope we get out of here. I mean, geez, the company would have to fold up and go away if we didn't get home. And we've got again Lee Bowie from Tri-State, the vice president of communications. So, we're maybe overrepresented, but this is very important to us. The Town of BV and Sangre de Cristo Electric have been strategic partners for years. I think we've been good partners, maybe not the most active partners together, but we've been there for each other. And Sangre de Cristo Electric's always stood in support of the Town of BV. I give you one example where a few years ago, we asked the town to extend water and sewer out to our headquarters. And we paid a lot of money to help get that done. We also petitioned then Administrator Philip Puckett for annexation, and our board wanted to be annexed into the town. The tax reports are in, and we helped collect $60,000 in new sales tax revenue in 2021, and $75,000 in retail sales tax in 2022. So, we're doing our part as a good BV citizen. We want to continue to be the power provider. Tri-State wants to continue to be our strategic partner. Our, we're on a trajectory now for renewable energy that I just didn't think we'd ever be able to to get to these numbers so quickly. But I've scribbled a couple of numbers down. And it's not smoke and mirrors. It's actually real power supply. By the end of 2025, we will be at 50% carbon-free power. And by that, I mean wind, solar, and hydro. So, we have 50% of our power supply will come from clean energy sources. And by 2030, we'll be at 7%. And remember, we're growing, Tri-State's growing. And so all of that growth is figured in with the new resources that'll be coming out of mine. And we couldn't possibly do that without Tri-State. A small, last-mile company, wired company like Sangre de Cristo Electric, with all of our economic challenges, need a major player in the energy industry, and we've got it, Tri-State. I don't want to filibuster here. I don't know, Mayor, if I could ask Lee Bowie to say a few words on behalf of Tri-State?
Sure.
Okay, then we'll wrap it up and then take questions.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mayor Faye and Trustees. Lee Bowie, Vice President of Communications with Tri-State GNT. We are proud to be governed by and owned by 42 electric co-ops and public power districts across four states. That diversity of membership powers us to be able to do the things that we're doing. We call it our Responsible Energy Plan. We announced it in January of 2020 at the state capitol with Governor Polis. It was a plan to really fundamentally transform how we provide power, but to keep power reliable, keep power affordable, and be responsible in all that we do. So, that includes 1,000 megawatts of new wind and solar. We brought on in 2021 the first 300 megawatts of wind. Between now and the beginning of 2025, we add another 735 megawatts of solar power to our system. That'll take us to over 2,000 megawatts of renewable resources on a system that has a total demand of about 3,000 megawatts. And then in 2025, we expect to add additional resources. That's going through our Electric Resource Plan process at the Public Utilities Commission today. I think what's important about all this is that we are staying focused on reliability and affordability. On the reliability side, the resilience discussion has come up very much with the winter storms we've had, winter storm year in February of 2021, the recent storms that have come through. Because of the diversity of the resources we have, we're able to move through those storms and not pass along additional costs to our membership. And there's co-ops that aren't certified by Tri-State and Colorado that have seen significant cost increases from those weather events. We've managed a very resilient system that's been able to get us through that, to the point where we've had a 4% wholesale rate reduction over the last two years, and our rates have been stable since 2017. So, we hope that we're taking the direction for our members and doing our job well, and then transforming our system, maintaining reliability, but significantly increasing our renewable resources, and decreasing our greenhouse gas emissions. So, we are on target to meet an 80% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from a 2005 baseline by 2030. And that is aligned with the state of Colorado's goals for utilities. In fact, our settlement with our members, the environmental community, state policymakers, has us for the first time for utility in Colorado, actually in our resource plan, stair stepping down our greenhouse gas emissions between 2025 and 2030. So, it's a great story, and we're proud to operate as a not-for-profit and serve our members and keep doing what we're doing.
That's great. And I guess I'd wrap it up with what's, what, what we don't, how we generally don't refer to this in our business, but Sangre and Tri-State aren't owned by Wall Street. They're owned by Main Street. Everybody in this room is an owner of Tri-State. And Sangre is one of the key owners through you of Tri-State. So, it's kind of a throwback model. It's not the most efficient way of governing a fast-moving, rapidly-changing industry. It's kind of slow and lumbering and cumbersome. But at the end of the day, I think it's the most honorable way to pay for any central public function that's necessarily monopolistic in nature. And that's being owned by Main Street. And Tri-State is fully on board with that concept with us. Mayor, anything else?
Do any trustees have any questions? I do about the agreement. I was looking at, sorry, just got to call it back up here. The, let's see. I wanted to ask about Section 3.1.
What page is that?
And that is on page 56. Those two paragraphs sound like they contradict each other to me. This is my first time reading an agreement like this, so I just want to see if I can get a better understanding. It says, "In consideration for the grant to this franchise, SDCEA shall pay the Town a franchise fee equal to a percentage of all revenue received monthly from the sale of electric power within the town." And then has some dates in there and a percentages. But then it says revenues received by SDCEA from the sale of electric power to the town shall not be subject to franchise fee. So, am I missing, what am I missing? I'm sure I'm missing something. Yes, sir.
I can explain. What that agreement is trying to say is everything that we sell within the town except to the town, town government.
Oh, to our offices.
Right. You're not going to be paying yourself a friend.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you for that. And then on Section 6.3, which is on page 61, thank you. Just the renewable energy standard annual compliance reports. When are those typically due to PUC?
I don't know. Does anybody help me here? Mike?
Generally, they're in June or July. Typically, I think we submit those in June.
Okay, thank you. And then also, Lisa, this may be a question for you or a shared question, but in your report last week, or last meeting, you were, and you referenced it today, just that SDCEA could no longer collect franchise fees for some period. And it was possible that they would likely need to reimburse customers. Can someone explain that a little bit more to me? What happens to that money? Is it a loss to town or savings for residents? Or what, and what amounts might we be talking about between now and when this contract or this agreement becomes effective?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll let you chime in here.
Okay. All right. Under the category, no good deed goes unpunished. When the franchise, we were negotiating in good faith. And when the franchise agreement expired, we didn't immediately stop collecting the franchise fee from our consumers. Legal counsel told us, you can't do that. You have no authority to do that. Stop doing it. And so we had to stop. So, we've got two or three months of collections in, not escrow, just being held right now. And all that we can determine to do right now is refund it or something like that. So, we have no authority to collect that on behalf of the town because the franchise fee had expired.
Okay, so who, where does that money go? Do the residents then keep some, get some money back? And does the town not get certain amount of money? Or what's a net effect here?
That's exactly what it means. It basically means that if we had revenue that was budgeted for that, it would be deducted from what we planned on for revenue. So, and that fee is very, I don't know, it's what, around $50,000? Or, Philip, could you chime in on the amount?
At 1%, which we were currently at, that generates about 40, roughly 40,000 a year. We had budgeted that stepping up based on the draft where we were, but the draft ordinance stepping up to, yeah, anyway, there was a timing thing in the draft. So, we budgeted 60 in 2023. I anticipate that we will not get a payment in first quarter and possibly until second quarter this year. Because they haven't been collecting once they found that out from legal counsel, so they stopped collecting. So, what was being, not being collected in fourth quarter of 2022, we won't get paid until first quarter of this year.
Okay.
So, I've, part of the step up that's in this new draft before you helps speed that up so that we're not in a deficit in our budget by the end of the year. So, we'll probably come in a little under.
Okay.
If this drags out, that will play a factor into that too.
Okay.
But it's not going to have a huge impact on our budget this year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm related to this agreement, but it's very generous of you to provide your community room for different groups to use free of charge, I think. That's really helpful to our town as a whole.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure. It's, you know, we're a highly leveraged co-op. We have, let's give comparisons. We serve almost 40% of our residential customers, which are 90% of our customers, our second homes. We don't have, there's nobody with central air conditioning. We're not selling a lot of electricity. And we have 12 customers per mile of power line. That compares to 30 to 40 per mile of power line that Excel has, because Excel serves metro areas, and we serve rural areas. And so not only are we not selling power to a lot of people, but they're not buying a lot of power. So, what can we do for the community? The community room is one example of something that we can do to give back, because we don't have much money to work with. So, we do what we can. And this is why rural electrics were formed in the first place, to serve areas that the for-profit companies didn't want to serve. And it's kind of a legacy of ours, and 80 years into it now, we're doing the same thing. But we think serving the town of Bina Vista is a golden egg. We really covet serving the town.
Any other questions from the trustees?
I attended the geothermal conference last week. It was super interesting. And I want to make sure that we continue to have a great relationship back and forth. Something that I brought up at that meeting that I remember from 2017 is that we've worked, we were working together at one point on doing a wind farm. And that would have been mutual beneficial for town as well as you. And then it was decided to move it to the prison, so then it didn't become a part of us. So, I want us to keep that in mind in the future if things come up like that, like, oh, I meant a solar farm, not a wind farm. But if something like that came up in the future, like, you know, windmills or geothermal or solar, I want us to keep that open so it's something that's mutually beneficial for you as well as the town. So, I don't know if that's necessarily something that needs to be in the franchise agreement, but something that came up after that, that conference.
Well, and I appreciate your comments, you know. We'd like more of a strategic relationship with the town. The solar plant, there's more where that came from. It's, it's difficult as a nonprofit to make a solar or wind play because a whole lot of the economics of the renewable project are the tax incentives. And we have no tax appetite. So, choosing our partners is kind of difficult. And making it cash flow without that tax appetite is, no, I'm doing your job. It kind of doubles the difficulty. But we're fully aware of the next tranche or the next project we're going to be approaching in town. And I don't know what that is. We have certain limitations of how much we can stack on top of Tri-State's renewable plays. But we're getting to a place now where we can start looking at those again. And we'd like to part of it.
And Dwayne Hiley, our CEO, who is a Sangre member, was at that meeting. We've been working closely with the Western Governors Association. Governor Polis is the chair of one of his initiatives, is the heat behind, beneath-your-feet initiative, to do geothermal resource assessment, which is desperately needed to be able to develop the data to prove out geothermal projects. But as we are closing down coal plants, the need for a dispatchable renewable resource like geothermal is at the top of our list for how we want to look at future resources, how we might be able to develop. So, we're quite interested in working to understand where the resources are, where the partnerships are to help us better understand that and then look in the future for potential resource development.
And we've got an expert on staff with Mike Allen.
Mike Allen, Sangre de Cristo Electric. I would like to speak to trustee here with regards to why the town land that we were talking to the town about for the Trump Creek Solar Project did not occur. One of the issues that we were sensitive to is that that would have been dedicated onto your One of the issues that we were sensitive to is that that would have been dedicated onto your park land that the town had allocated out by the February grounds. And we felt like with a long-term lease, that wasn't the best and highest use for that property. So that's why we went to talk to Department of Corrections, because they were under an executive order to help bring in renewables into the state's portfolio. And so that's why we ended up working with Department of Corrections on their property. One of the other things that we lose in that regard is because that's a secure area, it was relatively easy for us to piggyback onto the prison ground and not have that solar farm at risk of, et cetera. Then having to do with geothermal, I have worked a couple of years with Mount Krista Geothermal as a geologist in a technical advisory role. So very familiar with that. Of course, we attended geovisory with in attendance at that meeting. And so we're very excited about that that project and having Tri-State as our power supplier. It's just another key partner in this equation, because Tri-State serves parts of New Mexico also. And this resource, if it's here, will continue down into Mexico. And so if there's a project developed here, it could potentially be replicated down through Mexico. And that could be quite a generation resource, because that's baseload generation. That's twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. And that's what the power industry needs to be resilient. And so that's where you can leverage your renewable investments also is to have that baseload resiliency established and secured. Because as you know, wind doesn't blow all the time and the sun doesn't shine. So, thank you for
Thank you, Mike.
So do we need a a motion to
Is this a public hearing?
Yeah, just set this for the second reading.
I would like to make that motion.
Is this a public, is this a public hearing? It's a public hall?
It's listed as an other.
This is a note, the the statute doesn't make this a public hearing, but it is posted as one. So I think it's a good idea to let the public weigh in.
Okay.
And same for the second one as well. It's actually not necessarily a public hearing, but you can certainly allow the public to comment.
Thank you, Jeff. So I'd like to open this public hearing. If there is anyone from the public who would like to speak on this matter. Hearing no one, if there's no one on Zoom, right? Okay, there being no evidence of people speaking, I close the public hearing. So now, is there a motion from the trustees to carry this forward to the second reading on February fourteenth? February tenth, February tenth. I need the motion. Second. Okay, we have a curtsy and a cup. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And a motion passes. And I know a lot of hard work has gone into this.
So we'll see again of when this
That's fourteenth.
Don't touch it.
Yeah. Don't forget the candy.
Thank you, trustees. Thank you, mayor.
Now, we're going to go on to staff reports and I think that some of the staff reports will be longer than usual. We have a lot of things to cover. So I will turn it over to Town Administrator, Isa Farnell Rowan.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on one of the items on their last meeting, already tank and American Legion veterans asked for a donation, a contribution toward their looking to put in their memorial. So I did get some numbers and I've included those in into my staff report. These are sort of speculative in that as part of our minutes and part of the meeting last time, the group had talked about grants covering the transportation. Uh, but when I talked to Brian, he wasn't aware of the grants. And so, so he's going to go back and clarify that. So his numbers that you see are actually probably could be higher than this million. Transportation of five thousand estimated, uh, if we were contributing like that. But he said essentially that may not even be on the table. The the top, uh, it's on page seventy-six of your packet. The top figure here that you see is, uh, when it broke out proportionately to our population. It's kind of how we've done it in the past. Um, so BB will go with this, would be around two hundred and go over that. However, he did mention that Pontius Springs is already budgeted approved seven thousand. And so he was saying that, you know, it probably will end up being more like so that gives you an idea of the numbers, uh, if we went with the prorated based on population, which is what I think he wanted to gather up for you. I thought it was very interesting in talking to him, he said that they've been on a waiting list for twelve years. It is such a long time to wait for someone to give you a call and say, hey, I got a tank for you. So, you know, I mean, it's pretty interesting. But that would be the amount. And so we could talk about it through a trustee interaction a little bit more if you'd like as to go ahead and figure out a place to find that in our budget.
Lisa, I think that Peter has a question.
Sure.
Just, I didn't see this here, but given, uh, you know, population bracket breakdown, did Salada already agree to that amount for their side?
No, so we, this topic came up at the breakfast this morning with the administrators. And, um, it almost seemed like they hadn't been approached yet about the tank. And so I think we just kind of trudge forward with these numbers as what we would do as BB. And I guess we'll figure it out, because Brian, um, I think Brian is is just kind of feeling a need. But really, it's the Legion that is responsible for this. He's just trying to help, I think, facilitate it. And so, um, I think either of those numbers up to that amount, if you were to say, we're gonna be okay with that amount and we're gonna approve, you go ahead and authorize that amount up to that amount. So when it gets around the cutting and check, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish it would. It was, uh, it was interesting. Yeah.
Time frame?
So I haven't really been given a timeframe either, but I think that I'm sure if they need any
It made it sound like it was kind of like had to be seen for this, so they could reserve the tank. I remember that was their thing. They were like, hey, it's kind of a hurry up so they can make sure they get the one they wanted, I think.
Right, right. I do. Yeah. And I think that's kind of what Brian is trying to help them facilitate. Why he's trying to get involved in that. Of course, it's right there in their space, public space and memorial. So I think that we'll get there and I'm sure that, but this gives you at least an idea of the total amount that it could be. Probably will be less, um, if that transportation is covered by a grant and he's just unaware.
Just a point, uh, if I recall right, they said it was by the donations, not by a grant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was donations from other entities, not by a grant.
Okay, so they may still be working on those donations, too, then. So they may just not have an accurate number yet because of that, so. Um, and then moving on, a very important announcement is that our IT director, Michael Hammond, has given his notice. His last day will be February third. And of course, Michael has done a lot for creating a foundation of our infrastructure and our network, IT network. But as we've had discussions as part of our shadowing and getting to know him and talking about his area, he is a one-man shop and he's got an awful lot to cover. And I talked about this in my report specifically, but there's been a lot of things that have changed. I think since since we've hired him, uh, it's certainly cybersecurity, a big deal. And it's gotten, it's even more of a need. And I gave you an example of, I know in other municipalities, they actually had to hire one specific to that. I think that, you know, he does a lot to be proactive in making sure those things don't happen. Uh, and then he coordinates the training. But there are other things that could be done. Uh, I think also when it comes to responsiveness to to staff requests, um, I think he does the best that he can, but we had been trying to create a tracker system so we could justify to you all at budget time, potentially hiring someone that could help cover help desk requests so that he wouldn't be pulled away from the the things that are in the core priorities. So what I'm, uh, really trying to achieve here is to, and maybe you can talk about this again as part of trustee interaction. But, um, I really want to put this out for consultants, because I feel like with the consultants and I've talked with a lot of people about this, other administrators and staff. I even went out to all the department heads and got their feelings as far as the things that we need to put into a scope. And it just seems to me like there's an awful lot to cover. If you had a consultant, they have several different people that are experts on staff. Um, and so they could cover all the different aspects without being pulled away from another one. And we wouldn't be paying, uh, you know, benefits and other things, so that money could be applied towards an agreement. So what I would like you to consider is approving me to move forward with putting a a big bid packet together, request for bid packet that I would push out and get some proposals and then come back to you and get approval. Give you a recommendation on which one I I think would work best. Um, and I did give you the scope. Uh, that's pretty true to what what what'll be in that. So that's the key piece of that big big packet. Michael has given me some comments that have expanded that a little bit, uh, just given it more detail. But roughly everything that's in that draft is is still remaining. So anyways, something to think about and then you can you can talk about it in trustee interaction. And I think that's it for me. Um, and I think the next person on our agenda then is going to be Air Force Lieutenant. Jack, are you online?
Yes, I am. Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, trustees, staff and university folks. So the airport report can be found starting on page seventy-nine. First off, we have a bit of a staffing at the airport as well. Our senior line tech, Tad Larry, is going to be away for an extended period. He has family matters to attend to. His wife's not doing very well, so he's going to be attending to family matters to the next foreseeable future. With that said, we'll probably be looking at trying to get a temporary line tech in to help fill the gap until his return, if he does return. Business-wise, so we're doing pretty good. The operations, I say, we're probably pretty normal at this time of year. Chandra, our ops is working very closely with Philip to, uh, do the final twenty twenty-two budget and bring in all our invoices. It's looking like we're probably going to have a pretty good twenty twenty-two with all the testing. You can see, um, these aren't hard numbers, but we're looking at about a hundred and thirty thousand probably in testing revenue. And uh, what else going on? And what we're going to do, too, we're going to get a with Philip, we're going to take over a lot of, hopefully more of the airport specific financing. So we'll have tighter numbers for you going forward in the future. As far as the airport projects, the twenty twenty-three project that'll start in the summer with Dibble as our engineer, we're going to have another meeting with them next week, uh, February seventh. But a little bit of timeline, these are, and again, uh, next time I present this report, I should have better dates. But we're looking at putting to bid around mid-March for the project that'll come this summer, finalizing around May or June, and then we'll look in probably construction phase. That's, you know, the moving of the fence, paving of our apron, July and August. So that's what we're looking out for that. We got the Christmas party in here. I guess it, it has been a while since we've gotten together. So Happy New Year, everyone. But you can see a few pictures. We had our annual Christmas party. It was great. And we did did have a significant bump over the holidays for aircraft. You can see some of the pictures that are hangers. We were pretty much full in that hangar. So it was a, it was a good holiday season for the airport and the town as a whole. And, uh, just a little bit FYI, for the year twenty twenty-two, we did twenty or eleven days of snow flying. So, but not, that's one of our lower years. The previous year, I think, was more than that. And we've already had a couple this year. So you can look at our stats on the other page. So this is December. So basically, the end of the year, uh, we're up for year totals from last year, from twenty twenty-one. So we're looking, you know, the aircraft, each year, we seem to be getting a little more aircraft every year. So, you know, total aircraft are pushing around two thousand aircraft with four thousand operations. And, you know, almost ten thousand people passing through this airport in the year of twenty twenty-two. So a pretty good year. And, uh, our fuel sales again are up over the year as a whole year for especially with the Jet A, you're seeing sixty-one thousand versus forty-eight thousand the previous year. So again, a pretty good year, I would say, for operation wise. And for the, you know, November, December are a bit slower period for us, but pretty much standard for this time of year. That's all I have for our report. If you have any questions?
Questions for Jack? Thank you, Jack. Good luck with your staffing. Good luck to Tad.
Yeah, we're going to keep an eye on that and help him through.
Thank you.
We are good.
Alright, well, thank you.
Yes, we have town treasure.
Good evening. Hey, everyone. Uh, my first report of the evening starts on page, any one of your packet. This was quite the trifecta, at least tried, maybe more, um, where we rolled a couple of months, monthly reports. And the best way I could figure to do that was to do two separate reports, split out because we do sales tax. So, uh, sorry for the additional pages in your packet, but, um, it all the details there if you're interested. But starting at a high level is the quarterly report, which also falls on this date. So looking at fourth quarter twenty twenty-two, uh, some some high level things in there. One, uh, again, the two monthly reports for December and January are included. And I will, uh, I'll get to January report here in a second, because there's a board action, board request in that report. I tried to highlight some sections, uh, just for things I thought were key changes or or things of interest for the board. Because there is quite a bit of material here. So in the quarterly report, um, sales taxes, we have now received through November of twenty twenty-two. And both October and November sales taxes came in strong, uh, which is good. And the graph is included for your reference as well. As of November, we are year-to-date, let's see, a little over ten percent over twenty twenty-one and a little over six percent over over budget for revenues. So we have one more month to go that we will receive early February. But, um, things are looking strong on the revenue side for twenty twenty-two. Uh, in here also is balance sheet, uh, and fund balance as usual. And, uh, what I'll say is things are still moving a little bit. So right now, we are still paying out final twenty twenty-two invoices. We're doing accruals back to twenty twenty-two. So the books are moving a little bit here. So, uh, these things are a snapshot in time and And, um, so if you see anything in the balance sheet that looks a little, you know, questionable, feel free to ask me, but, um. What I'll be doing over the next three weeks is we'll be finishing messing with the twenty twenty two books. And then that's when we start engaging the auditors, um, with a balance sheet that I feel comfortable with and financial statements that. I feel are in good, good order for us to begin that process. Um, Jack, I'll give you one example, just for your understanding of how some of this works. Uh, Jack had mentioned the airport is looking strong for twenty twenty two and I agree with his statement. We have. Accounts receivable invoices that are out there for testing. And that's well over a hundred thousand dollars that we anticipate to receive. We've accrued that to the twenty twenty two books. Um, but we are waiting to receive payment in twenty twenty three. So there's some, there's some bookwork to do with those types of things. Um, also we convert our fuel expenses. Into monthly expenses based on how much fuel was sold per month. So that's another thing we do in January. So some of those things aren't reflected in the balance sheet yet. Uh, but the big thing that's not in the balance sheet is our fixed assets have not been updated. And we did a bit with fixed assets last year. We bought properties. We've started remodel projects. And so our, our cash has reflected down, but our assets haven't. Uh, necessarily come up yet, uh, to, to illustrate that. So. That's another thing that, that will come out, uh, in the next, in the next couple of weeks as we prepare for audit. So. I want to explain that so that you know, if you're looking at that, go, huh, I wonder, I wonder why our, our, uh, you know, net assets or whatever have. You know, are, are going up even while we're adding all these water rights and facilities and things like that. So. So that's that. Uh, fund balance came in as I, as we had hoped. Uh, towards the end of the year and that flows right into what we were projecting for twenty twenty three. So no, no concern with fund balance. In fact, our general fund unrestricted fund balance is a little bit higher. Than anticipated because our sales taxes have come in a bit higher and. We didn't, uh, we're a little under on expenses, which is pretty typical when you hit the end of the year, we underspend just a little bit of our budget overall. So that's, is what we got for fund balance. I have included quite a bit, a little bit more detail on our investments. Uh, so we have two, two basic. Uh, ways we invest, well, three, including our, our checking account that we use for our operating expenses. We are now drawing a better interest rate off of that. That's what we need to explain. We have pro equities, which is our bond accounts. And are where we, where we own bonds out of that. And, and so that's more of a short to long term investment. We've been. Michelle had been including those statements in, in her reports. So that's in there as usual. But one thing that hasn't been in there, but I'm going to be including going forward is what we have was what's called colo trust. Which is a higher interest, a series of accounts. Um, that, for instance, we're drawing just under five percent interest on that. So there's a colo trust statement in there that you can see as well. So I'm not sure why that wasn't in past quarterly reports, but it's, it's well over two, two and a half million, I think roughly. Uh, of, of asset cash that we have, uh, as well. So. That's what those are. And let me see quarterly report. Let me pause there. Any questions related to the quarterly report? And then I'll get into the, the monthly report real quick. Okay, great. So on page eighty four is the start of the January report. Uh, finance report and, um. In there, there's a amendment to the twenty twenty three that's twenty twenty three budget that's highlighted. And continuing the conversation that I brought up last meeting. Um, in there, I've, uh, explained the request to increase. Our expenditures in the finance department to change our finance clerk position from part time to full time. In addition, and that, that change, um, it does have some substance. That's roughly like forty five thousand dollars worth of change. So it's. It's of note. So that is explained in detail. In addition to that, we. Also need to adjust some revenues. So our, what I mentioned before, the interest rate we have on our banking account now, uh, it's quite a bit higher. So we need to adjust our revenues from twenty thousand to ninety thousand, uh, for that. And then our property taxes were under budgeted on the final version of the budget that was adopted. And now it's, uh, roughly nine thousand dollars. So the changes are summarized at the top of the page eighty five. Uh, the expenses and revenues, the net change to our twenty twenty three budget with these changes is a. Increased surplus of about thirty one thousand dollars. From those changes, the net changes there. So. I am asking for the board to consider approving these or approving with amendments or denying these. Uh, budget, budget amendments. And then these will be tracked along with any other changes that we'll bring forward to you about mid year for a budget adjustment.
I have a question for you on page eighty five. Um, with the, the last item that says change finance clerk from part time to full time, thirty eight hundred. Uh, is listed as an effect on the audit. Is that because of the person or is it?
That's a misstatement. Okay. So our audit expenses are higher. That has nothing to do with the finance clerk. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so now the, I've received the actual proposal from our auditors on what this year will cost. And that's, that's an increase. From what was.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good. And they were our auditors. They were first year auditors last year.
That's correct.
And that went okay with.
It did. It did.
Thank you. Questions for Philip?
So what you're looking for is the action on page eighty four?
Correct.
All right. I'd like a motion to approve. Uh, list of amendments as shown on the table below for twenty twenty three budget. Do you need to list them all or?
Yeah.
Second. Are we okay with, um, passing it without changing that to just increase in the audit fees?
Uh, as the justification.
Yeah.
Uh, you can, you can make that amendment.
I would propose that amendment. I don't know. Does the mover?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. On the second. Yes. Approved. Okay. Great. Um, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that it, Philip?
That's it.
Wow. I guess we have the whole evening left for Joseph. Go for it.
Good evening, Mayor Trustees. Thank you all for your, your time and attention. Um, my report begins on page one hundred and one. Um, and it is a, a new format. And it's the result of our discussion last meeting. Um, and so I, I want to first just say. This is a response to what I heard as well as like desires that I've had for a few months of wanting to reformat this. So I appreciate the nudge from last meeting. Um, and I, I would seek more feedback, right? If you, if there's certain information that you feel like is shown, it's not helpful or vice versa, we can. Talk about that. Um, and I'm happy to do that. Because my report is rather meaty. Um, I will not go through this line by line, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I wanted to just call out a few topics, um, from the report on page, starting on one hundred and one. The first is. Uh, just a quick note on the Carbonette Street update. Um, as you all are aware, we have, um, entered into a time with that project and entitlements. In a case of phase one, this is a major site plan review and a minor subdivision. Um, those applications are imminent. Um, fading less is already engaged other consultants and they're moving forward towards creating those splash sheets and those. Site plan packets. As you all might imagine, going from a literally a pencil drawing, uh, a sketch plan into more detailed architectural drawings. Um, and really diving into codes and everything else. There's a natural evolution of a project in this phase. And so one of those evolutions is looking at the complication of having a childcare space within a mixed use building. The residential above using modular factory, manufacturing. So we're looking at the possibility of separating out childcare space for a separate building on site, continuing to have it, um, continuing to be. The same size it was. Um, this in many aspects actually simplifies the legal side of this whole project for town. Instead of trying to approve and become owner of condominium space, just childcare space, it can be a fee simple ownership or continue to be ownership of. Of a land and a building. So I just wanted to highlight that as a natural progression of, of a project as it enters more detailed entitlements. Um, as you all know, a major site plan review goes before planning and zoning commission for approval and a public hearing. We don't, we haven't scheduled that yet. We don't anticipate that happening until March. Um, and we are looking at hopefully holding a work session with you all, you know, February. Um, to dive into deed restrictions and how those, uh, are looking as we get more detailed projects.
Good question. Yeah, just for me visually, I've been trying to, trying to think of this. The little, you know, pencil sketches that we've seen of it all. And if you're separating out the childcare, is it like? The childcare is going to be kind of in one section and because they're getting rid of a floor. It's going to be more condensed or where, where is that on kind of like the, the layout?
So we anticipate that the childcare space would be brought up to Carbonette Street. As you can try to imagine in your, your mind before the, the concept had the first building a bit off Carbonette Street was a playground towards Carbonette Street. So this brings a little bit more active street presence to the project. The childcare space would be towards Carbonette Street, um, with a playground just adjacent to it to the west. Um, and then either one or two residential buildings. Um, and again, this is a part of that evolution of how. Um, how fire codes look, how chief fires responding to things like aerial apparatus access. Um, those pieces. Um, but we are still looking at, uh, the same, if not higher number of apartments that you all saw on the sketch plan. Um, so nothing of substance is changing in the scope of work. It's just refining how it might actually get.
That was the building that had, uh, like the rental apartments, I think, was the same one as the, like originally with the, um, childcare.
The, the only, the only housing in phase one would be rental.
Was, okay. And so, and so, and what you're saying is that potentially then if that's moved out, we'd have space for potentially more apartments or.
Potentially, yeah. There, there, there is a concept right now that had up to sixty apartments, right? Um, but it, it really does come down to modular manufacturing. Spacing techniques and heights mixed right side by side and same building on the same foundation with a commercial space. Where it looks like it would be simpler and more cost effective to separate that building. So I just want to, you know, this isn't necessarily in, in your purview for authority or, or, or approval for our code. It could be. Um, but I really want to make sure that you all stay up on these, these slight changes. So.
Thank you.
The next topic at the top of, uh, page hundred and two is our comprehensive plan. Um, again, I'm not going to dive into detail. I'm happy to answer questions. Uh, but I did want to highlight, uh, sort of a very broad pathway forward. As you all know, that staff memo is a recap of phase one. Right? Which was a launch of this comp plan, asking the question, what is a successful comp plan? What should the scope be? How should we approach this as a town? Um, all the, the feedback, um, was both in that staff report and linked to full responses of, I hope all of you took a few moments to skim through those. Really, really interesting feedback from community members. Um, moving forward, as we look at phase two, three, four, beyond, um, we have an opportunity to. Both respond to the feedback we heard from phase one. Um, and also hopefully leverage our financial resources in a, in a more targeted way. So staff is pursuing launching a request for proposals for a, a phase two partner consultant. That will be focused on and have expertise and demonstrated success in community engagement and data gathering, right? Um, how can we do that job of phase two the best that it can be done? Using expert consultants to help drive best practices, formation of questions, formation of strategies. Um, excellent marketing and outreach to gain a broad swath of respondents, all those types of pieces. Um, so that would be the RFP we initiate now and pay for that out of our already town approved budget for the comp plan. It wouldn't take that full budgeted amount by any means. Um, and then there's an opportunity to apply for a grant from DOLA, uh, for phases three, four, and potentially some further work. Um, we're viewing phase fours also including an audit of our code to see how it aligns. Um, so there's an opportunity to pursue financial resources, um, but by structuring our F P processes this way. We don't need to wait until what would effectively be July to launch phase two. We'd be able to launch that sooner. Do that work really well, um, and then hopefully have financial resources coming to state to help with phases.
Yes. Quick question on that. In your, uh, comp plan memo, one of your takeaways was just that. Only relying on staff driven outreach and marketing may not produce results that address the desire for heavy. Uh, participation. And is that what this, this contract would help address then?
That's part of the, the dragon scope.
Okay.
And for, for, um, sort of benchmarking comparison stake or if it's helpful or not, but. Um, the city of Salata recently did a, a pretty in-depth recreation focused, but pretty broad reaching survey. It was an online survey, which I think is a part of our strategy and not the only strategy. But taking twelve hundred or thirteen hundred responses, um, which is a, a really significant portion of their population. So that's an example of a scope of work that staff cannot accomplish on our own. Um, but by partnering with an expert survey consultant that can really get the word out, um, and implement best practices in that. I think we can expect a similar responses here. So that's one reason that that scope of work is really targeted on. Data gathering, um, is to try to get help with that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on comp plan stuff? Um, before we dive into, uh, item number seven, a quick note, Lisa or Michael, I think we have. Um, Kyle Oberketter or Stephanie Copeland on the line. So if either one of those folks are on Zoom, if they might be able to be promoted to panelists in case the board would like to ask some questions related to boulders. While that's happening, um, I did just want to highlight the part of the new format of the report is offering, um, a table. That attempts to give an overview of development review cases. Um, so again, this is on page hundred and two into hundred and three. Um, there's a, a lot of information that could be presented. That I tried to distill down into what I, I heard from our discussion last time, as well as what I think might be most helpful to you all as you weigh. Variety of decisions that are before you. One, one thing I just want to stress, and I know we talked about it last time. Uh, everything that's shown numerically on this chart is a question mark. Um, even current applications, those can evolve and change through the development review process. Um, so when we say, for instance, the county EMS building is one commercial unit and. I think it's going to be two SFEs. I don't know that for sure. It's an educated guess. So I just want to make sure that you all are, are sort of doubling down on that mentality that this is a, a pulse check on what's happening or what might be coming. But it should not be taken as a, well, you said this and why didn't that happen kind of thing.
Right.
Um, so I, I just want to make sure that's out there. Um, with that, if there's any questions or initial feedback on that table specifically, you can hear that.
I, I really appreciate it. Thank you. A response a lot to what I was interested in seeing and, uh. Um, if I have additional questions, we can talk about them, but it seems to capture. You know, not what you know for a fact yet or what could, I mean, it may change and I hear that, but it just gives, it gives me a baseline. All that's out there, what might come before the board, what's administrative, what's P and C. And that's just really, and number of units and estimated SFE, that's, that's just hugely helpful. Thank you.
I just, I would second that, you know, at. Last meeting and the large conversation and my sincere gratitude for, for putting this together. It's amazing. We've done it. Really provides, my opinion, a great amount of information, education. And even though it is all questions, it's, it's super helpful. And also, um, super excited to hear that we'll have a work session coming. Um, I think they'll be super helpful. I'm sure. I all have different questions and I feel like we never have enough time to talk about stuff. So I'm super thankful for that as well. So, yeah.
Great. Great jobs.
And, and I'll say that, um, the, uh, the mayor and administrator's direction for that work session, I would suggest that we have. A good ninety minutes or so for that, um, deed restriction. You all know it's going to be a complicated topic, so I think.
I think we have a schedule for ninety minutes, don't we?
I think so, yes, we do.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
At the next meeting?
February twenty eighth.
We were twenty, sorry.
And I have available as well, so.
With that, there's one other topic that I wanted to, to call your attention to and ask for direction on from my staff report. It's on page hundred and two. It's highlighted as number seven. We, we have received a, a request that is contemplated by our code, by the developers of the Boulders. So as you all probably remember or, or have heard, this particular property, five acres, just north of Town Hall to the, to the east of the railroad tracks, has, has been in sort of development review discussions for four years in starts and stops. It changed owners about twelve months ago. The applicants can clarify that timeline if they'd like. And now they're pursuing their final plat. You all are aware that with final plat comes the full construction documents for the public improvements. All the water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, landscaping, that sort of thing. Everything that the town will take ownership of and provide maintenance for in the future. That final plat is also then approved alongside a PIA or public improvement agreement. And that agreement is a contract between town and the developer about how they will construct those improvements. Part of that PIA is a financial surety that the developer is expected to put up. It's required to put, be put up by our code. That essentially is a fail safe, right? If the improvements either don't get completed or completed in a way that is not per plan, then town can draw on that financial surety and either finish construction of those improvements or correct. That's a very broad restorers of, of the topic here. Our code specifically requires that financial surety to come in the form of either a letter of credit or a cash escrow or another form as approved by the town. So per that code language, a request has come in from Four Points Funding, which is the, the developer of the Boulders, to be able to use a performance bond. I did not dive into a lot of detail of bonding itself. Obviously, we have our attorney Jeff on the line for technical questions. But I did offer a few considerations for you all, as well as the direction that we received from Jeff's office. So I really am looking for a bit of direction from you about whether or not you would consider using this financial instrument for this particular project. If that is a direction you would like to give, I would suggest we, we begin building a policy that would help direct future conversations. So it's not just a, a free for all, so to speak. And, and as I mentioned, I think we do have the applicant online if you would like to ask them questions directly about.
Just before the meeting tonight, well, around four fifteen, I got an email from Mark Doring to that I haven't printed it out, but I'd like to read it. You know, it's not, it's not real long. Shall I go ahead with that?
Is it related to this topic?
Yes, it's related to the bonding, yeah. Yeah. Okay, it says, I would encourage you and the board to take careful consideration of the request from Four Points Funding about the subdivision bonds before considering making a decision about it. In fact, I would encourage you to get your staff, administrator, planner, attorneys, finance and public works to provide you with an education at a separate work session for new board members to have the attorneys there to walk through all the details as I could take an hour, an entire hour on how public, number one, how public improvement agreements work, what they say, how they are handled by your staff, funding, deposits, inspections, releases, et cetera, are often different, which is why it would be good to get in, to get info for the board as you have several new staff people there. Your staff may have different practices from what your attorneys draft in the agreements. What happened, number two, what happens if a project goes bankrupt in a bad economy? Much like what happened with Dean Hyatt and what happened when we had to try and get money from TPK Bank in Colorado East? When he split with the money, hint, they offered the town twenty-five thousand dollars when we were trying to collect forty-four thousand to get sidewalks installed. Those missing funds that taxpayers have to come up with if the bonds are not fully repaid by the bank. Three, why we removed the subdivision bonds in twenty eighteen and why we required a letter of credit. This is a very important deal and why Sunset Vista Four sat undeveloped after Dean Hyatt left in two thousand eight until we were able to get Dallas Campbell to restart and repay for the public improvements. Until the board gets answers, I would encourage you to hold off on this request to get an understanding why this is a very bad thing, in my opinion, that should not be overlooked, particularly if the economy gets worse and this investment company moves on to the next project in some other community. I also would encourage you to use this opportunity as a reason to stand up and state that this is an important thing to protect the taxpayers in BV. If they want to do it in Rye or Bailey, that's their problem. But your job is to protect BV's taxpayers from potential bad things and to not just try to make it work for someone else that says they want to be part of the town. If you just reduce your standards. That doesn't work when you're dating someone. Why should it when they are asking for your permission to build? Please do not be rash. I'm going to be in a meeting tonight, so I will not be able to make it via Zoom to state the above. Mark Doring, Mark was our previous planner.
I'm not really sure why he, did he only email you?
Yeah.
And he understands like public record and things like that. So I don't know why he wouldn't have emailed all of us and sent it to town clerk.
Yeah, I, I mean, the best thing would be for him to come during public comments. Or to, to hand it over to Paula so that she can read the record. Because it's sent to all of you at once. So I guess what I, and that's why we should, Jeff, I know you're online, that sixteen oh five four two D one. I wish we could almost read that language. Because the way that it's written right now, it leaves the discretion up to board to make a decision on this. So it's already there. And so, well, what I think Joseph correctly, but what I think we're proposing here is clean that language up either way. But definitively, because right now it doesn't really say, it just says town has the discretion. It doesn't say whether that's town administrator. It doesn't say whether that's board of trustees. So we're doing our due diligence by bringing this up as a cleanup, number one. Number two, I think that we've talked a lot about affordable housing. Doing things that we can to help relieve some of the strain and the financial burden. And so there is that line, right? Because we went through the affordable housing audit. We had consultants tell us many extreme things. This is just another thing that could be, could be an incentive or something that could be written in, but still be on a case by case. Just in the face of affordable bill, affordability of housing and AMIs. So I think that was the direction that Joseph and I were talking about. Not particularly for every case of development, but specifically when it's affordable housing and needing certain AMIs. Definitely, I think there will be more discussion on this as he proposes, so. Those are just my comments.
Mayor, may I? There's like, there's like good nuggets and all of that that was just shared by everybody, but I.
I would, I would encourage you. We have gone through some experiences in the past with previous or with development that wasn't secured as our code was updated in twenty eighteen. There were previous ways of doing that, land, other assets. And it was troublesome. There was, there were problems. So I would encourage you to understand through Jeff or the town attorney what the risks are and then assess whether that's appropriate or not. And then move forward from there, but I want to make sure Jeff can explain what the risks are with this particular proposal.
Something particular with bonds? Bonds have a special category?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to explain, you know, sort of our, my philosophy on this. We, I've been dealing with these similar, similar requests for all of our clients for twenty years. Letter, letters of credit and cash are very easy to use when a developer goes bankrupt or goes away or doesn't complete the obligations that they've agreed to complete. Bonds are much more difficult to call on. They can often result in having to file a lawsuit. And so I always recommend not using bonds as security and instead only taking letters of credit or cash. And I think a, a big percentage of my clients have that in their requirements. They don't take bonds for, you know, for public improvements. They just, they require cash or letters of credit. I think the main, I don't want to get too complicated, but the main reason is because you can collect cash in a letter of credit, whereas bonds are more difficult and costly. So I generally recommend against any kind of bonds for securities for public improvement agreements. The trade off is, is that I don't know for sure, but I, I'd expect that bonds are less costly for a developer than a letter of credit or cash. Because letters of credit have gotten more expensive in, in the last number of years just with, as financing instruments, but they're definitely better for the town than a bond. So that, that's pretty, pretty much it. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Jeff, when you look at the code as it's written right now, is there some cleanup that?
Well, you know, it's up to you. I mean, I, I recall discussing this when the code was being drafted. And I think there was some conversation about whether to just require letters of credit and cash and that's it. But I think at the time the town wanted to have some flexibility because, you know, you, you, at some, in some points in the past, you basically had no development and didn't want to make it difficult for developers to, you know, invest in the town and proceed with, you know, beneficial development for you. So I think we left that language in there because we wanted to provide the option. That language appears in the provision that deals with public improvement agreements, which get approved by the board. So ultimately, the agreement itself would specify what's being required. And then the board would have the final decision. So I mean, developers are free to request it. If you guys want to just cut that out entirely and say, yeah, we're never going to do bonds. It's just not, it's just not beneficial for the town. We could always get rid of that and just say, don't even ask because the code doesn't allow it. But at the time, there was, that was left in there because we just wanted to retain some flexibility in case perhaps it made sense in some situations, but I, I'm pretty much going to always recommend against it as the attorney, but I recognize there's other considerations and just what's the easiest to collect on.
Jeff, is it kind of a, like a piecemeal approach where, where it's easy to pull on a letter of credit or easy to, to grab cash? Whereas on a bond, you've got to be suing for the whole bond or anything?
Yeah, well, I mean, basically like the letters of credit are like they're on demand letters and you basically can just go walk right into the bank and say, give me the money because for this reason, and they have to give it to you. Cash, you've got the cash and so you can do whatever you want. You know, you, you're supposed to, you know, segregate it. You can't spend it on anything that's not allowed to be spent on, but you have the cash. And a letter of credit, you have to go to the actual, you know, surety, the, the bond company. You have to, you know, make your argument and they're not always super excited about just paying you out. And so ultimately, i- it's not really the piecemeal issue. It's more getting the money that you, you, that the, that gets contested sometimes when you try and call a bond. So it's just more difficult. And if they don't want to give you the money, you can't get it. Whereas on demand letters of credit are backed by the bank. And that, there, there's like a, a legal norm that they give you the money when you demand it. So yes, bonds are much more difficult and you can.
If you have to go after a bond, you might get years of legal fees or?
Yeah, yeah. You know, I don't like to earn my money that way. So it's, it's just not there, you know, you could, you can get your money, but I just, it's just not. It's so much easier with letters of credit and cash.
I guess the policy, I guess, what you actually mentioned with policies, like if this were to happen or so, like I want to open the floodgates for everybody to do this because I think obviously if it's, it's tricky, could set up a pretty good precedent for anybody else that comes through. So I assume. I don't know if that's what you meant by talking about policy, but I think it is kind of risky, like, I mean, thinking about the town, you know, our constituents and if something would fall through, then yeah, they're we're taxing, you know, it's a lot of, it's pretty messy and though it sounds like the borders could be a great place and such, we do have a lot of other developments with affordable housing options and things like that too to think of. So I don't also feel like our backs are against the wall to have to potentially go this route. Those are just my own thoughts. I know there's folks online, but I'm inclined to go along with the lawyer on this because I, I, I wouldn't want to see town get stuck in a sticky spot.
Staff report too, so we can talk further about it in trustee interaction if maybe and put it on a business item or, you know. I just don't want to get too deep.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I did, I wanted you to get enough from Jeff and, and understand the scenario. I think my concern with this is really just the way that the code is written. And I, we leave it an option in the code and yet we're not really willing to deliver it. It makes it difficult on staff to enforce. And it also is in my mind a little bit misleading to the developer on the other end.
Lisa, is it possible for me to make one comment? I don't mean to, I, I just want to address a couple of things. This is Stephanie Copeland. Yep.
Okay, thanks.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to speak out of turn though, so I don't. There, there, there's just a couple of things that are contextually relevant here that aren't, aren't being made, they're not being made aware. They're, they're not being spoken about.
Okay, why don't you go ahead for three minutes?
Sure, um, sure. So we are, we are an opportunities own fund. So we build all over Colorado. We've raised all the capital in other, different than other developments where capital and equity are called over the term of the construction. All of our capital goes in upfront. So we have nine million dollars of equity going in and fifteen million dollars of debt that's going in upfront. First Western is our bank. That goes in upfront and the, so there's, we don't have control over the funds once, once our loan closes. It goes in and it's there. It's a different level of risk than a developer who is calling. The only reason we're asking for a bond because this money is sitting there to do the work and to complete it with contingency is because it's just so much more expensive and we're trying to keep costs down because we are not a subsidized developer. So we don't have loan, we don't have grants, we don't have any credits. And we're marketing to eighty to a hundred percent, eighty to a hundred percent AMI with zero subsidy. So that's why we're, we're asking for it. I just want to make clear, we're not trying to do this to to try and get away with something. And I think the context is very specific that all of our capital is going in. I couldn't walk with it if I wanted to. And, and frankly, we're an institutional investor. We're building a thousand units in communities like S Park and Buena Vista. It's our second investment in Buena Vista. Durango, Grand Junction, Limo Springs and around the state. I just think that context is relevant and there may be situation where the risk isn't actually higher because the cash is sitting for the entire development, including the public improvements in the bank. I hope I made that in three minutes.
You did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
So we're still in staff reports.
Yep. I, I can be done, but I, I do, you know, either we can revisit trustee staff or if you would like to. trustee staff, or if you would like to provide direction at the moment of where you'd like to see this go.
Yeah, I think I would still agree with town attorney to keep it like that, but also to keep that. I don't know if I would want to change it yet. You see, it is good to have an option out there in case if something comes along that we need to that if we're trying to help something, but
I, I don't know if we can really answer that tonight necessarily because it seems like there's like just hanging out and just in case something comes along, I think some clarity on what that something is, you know, if it's like a we're open to other mechanisms if it meets certain criteria. Or there's some, some certainty, but I don't know if we have enough information to kind of make a change to the code tonight necessarily.
Yeah, and I think that when we, when I mentioned a policy that would take time to create. And so I think we would, the, the request from staff would be this is a request that is before you as is allowed in our code. And if, if you think it warrants the creation of a policy, those two things should probably happen simultaneously. Decision on this case, this request and the direction to, to draft a policy to guide us in the future. I'm not sure that we can tie one to the other, just simply because our code does contemplate these kind of one off requests to be, you know, to be considered in there. I would, if I were to draft a policy, I would base it on affordability and how it meets our housing needs assessment. And laying all the cards on the table and not advocating for this request or against it. This development would meet all the definitions I would create for unsubsidized affordability. Again, I'm, you know, I, I take your direction a hundred percent.
We've been burned before on things that seem very straightforward.
Well, Jeff, can you speak to what the caller mentioned that they couldn't walk away if they wanted to necessarily or?
Yeah, so I think it's really difficult for us to sort of try and analyze this like on a, in a staff comment period for a specific development. So I, I, I mean, I, I don't want to I, I, it's a great question and I think that it's, Stephanie, I believe she, she raises an interesting point, like this is a little different because all the money's in the bank, but yeah, I, I'd have to sort of understand it a little bit better because basically you're securing public improvements. And, you know, if all the money's in the bank and then the public improvements partway through the development go up in price because concrete went way up and they don't have more money and it can't get done. I'm not necessarily sure that eliminates the risk or maybe less risk. And she, I, I'm not saying she's not being accurate. I just say that I haven't really thought this one through. I think it's difficult to just try and have me answer that on the fly without really having a conversation offline or looking at what, what exactly is being guaranteed and the cost of it and how she's, how the bank is basically holding onto the funds. I just know that if I try and do something on the fly like this without really looking at the details, we're gonna, I'm going to give you a bad answer. But you know, that said, this is kind of the reason why maybe it's worth keeping that provision in your code. And then when it comes to you, you know, staff can discuss it with her. I can be involved. Look at the, look at exactly what's happening with the money that's going to be used for public improvements. And then when the agreement is actually ready, there's a public improvement agreement, we could address it and make a recommendation to the board at that point versus trying to decide about what to do with the code right now. And you know, I think Joseph made a good point too, that like if we're going to actually allow other kinds of security, what are going to be the, how are we going to look at that? What are we going to analyze there? What's the criteria going to be? I'm not really sure it's going to be super easy to put together some kind of policy that here's where we're going to allow something else. Because I think it's going to be infrequent is my guess. And maybe that needs to be sort of these ad hoc determinations that come when the developer, like Stephanie says, here's why we're not risky. And maybe we could analyze it, you know, on an ad hoc basis versus trying to create a policy and or decide right now during your meeting. Cause I just having a hard time changing my mind, to be honest with you. Sorry, that was a long winded explanation, but seems like I would probably leave the code the way it is so you have flexibility. And then with this particular application, I think maybe staff and I should, you know, look at this separately offline. And then we can make a recommendation to you when it's time for you to look at the public improvement agreement. And, you know, we can communicate to the applicant ahead of time, you know, what we're, what we're, we're going to recommend. But I think it's difficult to decide that right now without having really a better look at this. It takes a little more detailed thought.
Thank you. I'd like, I'd like to suggest that you follow that path and work with staff. Keep the policy the way it is right now. And, and then specifically look at this public improvement agreement and, and this scenario and see if it fits a reason that we would want to make one of those other options available.
I don't like the idea. It kind of just makes me feel like we're, it's like a hostage negotiation a little bit that if we don't approve this bond, then it's not going to be then the housing is going to be more expensive. And I don't like how that feels.
I, I think that, you know, the, the truth of it is, is that ultimately, you, you know, there's a credit and cash and lieu or cash are going to cost developers more no matter what the developer, who the developer is. Generally, I mean, some developers have just cash and they just, it's not a big deal. They can afford to have the cash sit for a while, but I mean, it's gonna, you know, anything that increase the costs are going to increase the costs. And I guess the question is by how much? And so I, I don't really have a good answer for that. Maybe Stephanie could talk to staff about that and say, here's how much more this is going to cost us to do it this way. How, is it, is how it's going to translate into the prices that we're going to be able to provide? And, you know, maybe that's a factor you, you want to consider when she also says that, hey, you know, your risk is low for these reasons. I'm just, you know, I'm not, I'm making an excuse for me to have some more time to think about it. That's really what I'm doing.
Yeah, she does kind of go into the different costs.
Yeah, yeah. So I was just thinking.
To be fair, I feel like that's enough direction for me. Just, just so you all know, I feel like.
I have a question about the water section there. Joseph, about how the planning commission recommended the board down or denied the water dedication ordinance. I don't know if you have talked about this right now, but, or if that's going to come up in February, but I'm very curious on what grounds that was or if it, because I've, I've pretty much never have seen that. Where it's not like amendments or anything like that. It just says deny. I don't know if that's pressure from developers or what, or if that's going to come forward with the whole thing in February. That's your, your plan.
Yeah, the, the plan would be to, to, once the public commentary for the water policy and water ordinance closes at the end of this, this month, that I create kind of a summary report, including discussions from B N Z and the reasons for that recommendation. That recommendation is largely in line with the staff report you all had in December where staff recommended tabling or in different words like not addressing or not moving forward with the ordinance altogether, but pursuing a water allocation policy. That was the same sentiment of what the P N C recommended, but I will be reading all that back forward.
Jo- Joseph, this is Kyle Overketter from the applicant. Just, it sounds like you guys have moved on and I, I'm just trying to get clarity of where that got left.
Uh, that's all right. We'll, we'll be, I'll be in touch with you. I think we'll, I'll be in touch with you. Yeah, we, we don't have a decision yet.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. I, I don't mean to be a stick in the mud. I'm just trying to protect the town and I'm sure it's a great development. So I just think we need to have a conversation offline with Joseph and everybody, so.
So, so at the end of your report?
Are you the happiest person in the room?
Alright, so now we have a public hearing. This public hearing has to do with the twenty twenty-two final budget adjustments. So open the public hearing.
Alright. Here we are again, approving budgets. We approved twenty twenty-three budget and twenty twenty-two and we approved amendment two and twenty-three. I don't know, it's confusing, but uh, no, this is a pretty standard step. We, we've, a few years ago, we started to adjust the budget twice per year, once at mid-year, once at the end of the year, and that just allows us to keep up with uh, what happens during, over the course of a year. So before you tonight, I've summarized the, the changes for the final adjustments of the twenty twenty-two budget. And this is important mainly because there are certain expenses and revenues that were approved and discussed during the year that we, we went forward with and we realized those expenses and some of the revenues. And so we want to make sure that the budget is formally adjusted. Uh, so it doesn't look like we went off the rails at any point. So I, I provided an analysis broken down by fund. And all of those things you should recognize, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you have. The main thing that wasn't specifically discussed was the fund transfers and that's on page one eleven. So each year we, we do typically have a few inter-fund transfers typically from general fund to uh, to capital improvement fund and from general fund to the airport. Those are, those are kind of our standard transfers. But with the amount of activity that we had acquiring the new police station, starting the remodel project and then shutting down the all hazard fund and deciding to bring that balance down to zero to help with the purchase of the old police station, et cetera, et cetera. That required a series of, of capital transfers. So I'll just highlight one example and then I'll pause and take any questions. When we purchased the, what will be the new police station, the building and the property itself, we spent that money out of fund balance. The project code, the account code was in the capital improvement fund. The fund balance was actually pulled from the general fund. So to cover that expense, we're transferring more from the general fund to the capital improvement fund to cover that. So that's why we went from an original budget, uh, transfer budget of five hundred and sixty-five thousand up to three point one million. And, and we had a series of, you know, we sold the old fire station. We sold equipment that was going to that project. So it's just putting the monies into the correct funds at the end of the year. So I did want to call that out because we weren't like specifically talking about those transfers as they were happening, but that kind of trues up our, our books for twenty-two. So very similar to what we did in December, there are two resolutions to consider approving resolution number thirteen and fourteen. Thirteen approves and adopts the expenditures and revenues. And then fourteen appropriates the funds to cover the expenditures. I don't think I have any other thing to point out. I think everything else was pretty kind of tracked in discussions along the way, but I will take any questions you might have.
Questions for Paul?
We have to approve them separately?
I just, I, on record that you approved resolution.
Do that in one or separate? That's your choice.
Separately, I'd vote, I'd vote on them separately.
Is there a motion to about resolution thirteen?
You'll make a motion to approve resolution.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. It is a public hearing. Thank you.
A public hearing, you're right.
We need public, uh, public comment for sure.
I'll open this for public comment. Anyone have comments? Anybody online? Okay. Public comment period. And close the public hearing. Now, is there a motion in regard to?
No, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number thirteen.
So we have Row, Cobb. And we should probably do a roll call vote on this.
Trustee Cobb, yes. Trustee Hilton Higa?
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi, yes. Trustee Row?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher, yes.
Motion passes. So now, is, is there a motion in regard to resolution number fourteen?
Make a motion to approve resolution number fourteen. Second.
LaCretzi Swisher. And let's do a roll call vote on this, please, Paula.
Trustee Swisher? Yes.
Trustee Row?
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi, yes. Trustee Hilton Higa?
Yes.
Trustee Cobb, yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Alright, the next one has to do with City Market. And change in the law, which will allow them to sell wine. And how that how that type of modification should be approved. So Paula, I think this is at your direction.
It is mine. Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor Faye said, that the voters approved the sale of wine and any store that currently has fermented malt beverage off premise license and they will automatically roll over to be able to sell that one. So City Market has submitted their request to extend their premise. And currently, um, the store has forty-two feet of designated space and they're requesting to add another twenty-eight feet to have a total of seventy feet area. Police Chief, Chief Dean Morgan has reviewed this application and he did not have any concerns with their extended premise. And according to municipal code, the clerk has the authority to prove applications for liquor license for renewal, special events, temporary permits and transfers. But I do not have the authority to do extending or modifying a premise. So that is why this is becoming before the board tonight. So the board is requesting that the board of trustees do go ahead and make a motion to approve the premise request. If the board denies request, the applicant does have the right to appeal your decision.
Okay, so are we looking for a motion here?
Yes, we'll need a motion and then you will sign the application tomorrow.
Okay. Somebody like to make that motion?
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve the application. Like worst number, I guess there is no number. Just proving the application is that suffice.
So we're approving, approving the application or are we approving you as being able to?
You're approving the application because first we have to approve the application for City Market and then the next discussion is an ordinance change to allow me to go ahead and proceed with approving the modifications. And whenever I get something like this, be it, you know, if it was a modification or a transfer, if there was ever any question, it would definitely be escalated to the board. That would not be a decision that I would take upon myself. So.
Okay. Alright. Probably stand it again.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the premises for Dylan Companies LLC, D P A, City Market number thirty-seven. Four thirty, South Highway twenty-four, Buena Vista.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, yeah, okay. Alright, so we have LaCretzi and Hilton Higa. And all in favor?
I have a comment first.
Alright.
I have a comment first.
Yeah, please.
Discussion. I just find it interesting that they want to add additional twenty-eight feet of space when they can't even fill the shelves with the normal things, but so it's good that, that they can have more space for alcohol, but you still can't have essentials. That's all I have.
Okay. So all in favor? Okay, um, so all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anyone opposed?
Stay.
One opposed, Row? Okay, and then we'll move to, um, item E, which is the revision to the code. Concerning the delegation of liquor licenses to the town clerk. And referral to the board, definitions, fees, criteria for transfer application, and appeal deadlines.
Okay, so there's, when, uh, this came across the desk, you know, as far as doing the modification of premise and things. Catherine, Jeff and I, you know, for the last few years, we've been talking about how the liquor, um, code needs to be tweaked a little bit. Because there are some different things that had needed to be updated and reviewed. So we took this opportunity. As far as making more than just a change to allow, um, the town clerk to do premise modifications. So I'm going to run through real quick some of those changes that we are proposing. Um, like I said, the modification to liquor premise and then also section one. As you know, currently for, um, liquor license applications, the applicant has to do a needs and desires petition. As it stands now, the entire, um, town limits of Unavista is in that premise area. What, um, we're requesting is that we change that radius within one mile of the location of where the business is. So the applicant would have to go around to just so specific people who live near the establishment versus somebody who's on the very edge of town. And then, um, section two was a fee for background checks. When we were reviewing, we noticed that, uh, for liquor licenses. It stated that it was a hundred dollars, whereas for marijuana it was fifty dollars. And then our fee schedule. We hadn't married it up to where both liquor and marijuana background checks were the same. So Catherine's recommendation is just that we put in the referred to the town fee schedule. Because if we change that going forward on the fee schedule, we won't have to go back and change the code. Section three, this relates to the transfer of liquor license and it was not a part of our, that criterion requirement was not a part of our code. So Catherine recommended that we update that. Um. Section four, this section adds modification of premise applications to applica- applications delegated to the town clerk. And so that's the section where it does state, you know, where I have the authority to approve specially vet liquor permits, renewals and transfers. Now we're going to add in that section, the modification of premise. We've also changed, um, the requirement that in section five, that not everything is automatically referred to the board. So let's say that I get something that comes across that it's very clear that it doesn't meet the requirements and Dean has questions and stuff. So instead of bringing it to the board for denial, we would deny it there at that point and things. So there again, the board, the applicant, applicant could probably always appeal that decision. But prior, if Dean and I have already said, no, there's, you know, no way this should go ahead and even be presented to you. That gives us the, um, ability to do that. Um, in subsection six, number of days for an appeal, it currently was ten, that's been changed to fifteen. So that we're in tandem with the state regulation. And then, uh, section five, this one has been ongoing. This actually refers to the hundred foot, hundred and fifty foot distance from a school. For a hotel and restaurant liquor license. Currently, our code says JV County High School. That high school is no longer in, near the area where it used to be. It's now moved totally. So Catherine's recommendation is we just change the term to school. So no matter where it's at, no matter what name the school is, it is addressed. Any questions?
Are we happy with the distance requirements, the hundred and fifty foot and the one mile radius?
According to state law, as far as with the distance from school, the state law is five hundred feet from a school. You know, to have a hotel restaurant liquor license. Um, and years ago, the town had changed that to a hundred and fifty feet.
And that's why. Much more lenient. Now you're gonna have a bar that's a lot closer to a school.
And you will be reviewing an application on February fourteenth. For Cool River BB Coffee Shop there at the corner of five oh five Main Street, who is requesting a liquor license.
Oh.
But it does beat the criteria for the distance, which we will go into detail on. That hundred and fifty feet is defined by law or by code that it's the designated walking path. So it's the property line of where the school is, following the designated property path along the sidewalk across the street to the location. That's how that hundred and fifty feet is determined, not by, you know, just crossing in the middle of the street.
So it's not as the crow flies, it's it is across the town blocks. J-Walker.
Tiny.
I mean, I, I, I don't know, at some point we probably should consider that as to whether we like that hundred and fifty foot. Um, distance, or whether it should be more.
I feel like I can make it hard for a long business sometime.
Yeah, so like, is anybody within? Right now, would that?
Probably Avery Parsons' school would be the.
Right. Would that one that you'd be measuring from? But from there, would that then, if that was changed and the, if somebody was close enough and they wanted to renew it, then would they be like, well, now you're. Would they be grandfathered into?
They'd be grandfathered in.
Okay.
They would apply to new ones.
Got it. Okay. So I just want to see, that doesn't seem there.
But it could affect anybody who's like, um, building under, uh, is it Soul Vista? No, not Soul Vista. Avista, the one with the apartments on top and the office businesses down below.
Yeah.
And this is one of that, this is where the coffee shop is located in that building, right around the corner.
Has the police chief, um, given any opinion on this?
As far as the liquor license you will be reviewing?
Um, no, just in terms of distances and proliferation of.
No, because on this code change, we were just looking at focusing on changing the verbiage to the school name. You know, taking out Avery Parsons' school name and then also the, uh, Chief of County High School. One of the things with the liquor license application, like I normally do, I have to send it out to the police chief. Um, planning department, code enforcement, public health, and Chief of County Fire for their comments as far as new liquor license. And yes, Dean will have, um, a memo to the board regarding. A river, so.
Yeah, okay. Any comments from anyone?
I think it sounds fine.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two.
Second.
You want me to read all that?
And that's Row and Cobb.
Commending certain sections.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Okay, so, um, it's good, it's nine eighteen. We still have trustee interaction and, uh, and then we have an executive session. We could take a break. At some point, we could do it after the trustee interaction or.
That's what I would recommend, yeah.
Okay, before the exec session. Are you desperate?
I'm desperate now. Or you can start in our session without.
Okay, um, well. We were actually expecting more public comment about the post office issues. And, um, a little history on the post office is that, um, you know, we first got involved with. I mean, the help of a couple of citizen advocates, I call them, um, Grace Garrett and, uh, Mary Ann Uzalak. Who fought for years with the post office to, um, to try to get us free. Post office boxes for residents of the town and, um. Because we had no other way of getting mail. And, and so if we have no other way of getting mail other than having a post office box, it was supposed to be free. And yet our prices were climbing, um, quite a lot recently. And so, um, so they fought the battle, they, they, uh, even arranged for media to come in from, from the Denver area and the newspapers. And, um, they picketed the post office. And it was a big deal and, and, um, it may have helped get the attention of the post office. Um, we also were able to, um, enlist the help of, uh, US Senator Bennett's staff. Uh, Matt Kirker has been very helpful to us. And so we wrote a lot of letters, we had a lot of meetings. Uh, Philip Bucket was very much involved in this and, um. So, uh, over time, amazingly enough, we actually ended up with three mailboxes. So, so that was a big win. In the midst of all that, we realized that the post office actually has a lot of other problems. And they're probably the same types of problems that other businesses have through, uh, labor shortages. People really can't afford to live here on the wages that they get paid here. So, um, the post office. Has been, we, we enlisted the help of Matt again with Senator Bennett's office. And so, um, Matt has been talking with them and, and they have actually, uh, made some progress. Because what was happening now is that the people who had, um. Who lived outside of town, who were on the, on the courier routes. The drivers were, I think, contractors and, and, uh, several of them quit all at once. And so the people who live outside of town are not getting any mail. And, um, so they've at least now. Dug out people's prescriptions from the big pile of stuff and they've actually sent, uh, drivers out individually to people's homes to deliver prescriptions. Um, and supposedly they are staffing up with temporary workers to get the mail sorted out. And, uh, delivered to people. So hopefully that will. Uh, continue to make progress. Uh, I would like it if people from, um, from the public would let me know. Whether they're getting mail or not, um, because otherwise I don't, I don't have any way to know. But I know it's affected, uh, the golf course and it's affected people north of us and all the way up to Twin Lakes. Um, and people to the south of three oh six. So, so it's very widespread and, and you know. It's one of those things that you grow up as a little kid, you know, hearing that, the, uh, the song about the post office. And I, I had this all written out, but you know, neither gloom nor heat of day or rain or snow or any of this. None of this is going to keep that, that, that deliverer, delivery person from getting your mail to you. And we just want the post office to, um, to meet that, to meet that standard. And, uh, we, we can't do anything to control them, but, um. And it certainly doesn't help for people to just go in and yell at the correct staff because those are the people who are working. So, um, and I like your idea, Felipe, you know, delivering half the mail. And then, and then the other half some other time, but I don't know that we can really dig into it on that level. So, um, anybody else have comments they want to?
I saw, um, I saw on the news that I think state is in need of about like six hundred workers to. Get back on track with where things are across the board. So not just here, but across the state. I saw, uh. Their, their, our state, or with our house, Brittany Patterson, um, had wrote, wrote her to, uh, lose to joy as well. Um, obviously because she, she represents us. So to, you know, let, well. I hope you know by now, but, um, but also to push. So I noticed that, you know, from those higher levels, hopefully some things are happening. Or obviously we're chipping away at them, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a common conversation in town between everybody is how bad the post office is. I've definitely been approached personally because of my position on the board, like, what can you guys do? Well, it's hard because it's federal.
Yeah. Do we know the governor's office has gotten involved at all? I don't know if the governor has gotten involved. Because it's a federal, it's a federal corporation, right? I mean, people are writing letters.
Yeah.
Because it definitely has affected many, many towns. I know that Elizabeth is still fighting it. Um, trusted mute, you know, has the same, same issue.
I'll jump as well.
So we're, we're lucky that we got somewhere with, uh, you know, and it was definitely with the help of Matt. To get there and, and I know Philip battled, battled away for years. So that's what I have to say about that.
Can I say one more? I get a little concerned that. I think the coverage is good and you need to speak out about things, but I also am a little concerned that. If it makes this area of Unavista, Twin Lakes look so bad. I don't think that helps bring more people in to take a job. So I'm also kind of like devil's advocate, obviously. We need people to know and need coverage, but at the same time, like, I also hope it doesn't scare folks away from potentially taking a job. Because they're like, why would you want to work, you know? So just as a, as another thought too. I mean, I'm talking about more larger scale media. Sometimes that can not be helpful also.
Yeah.
So just as a random thought that I hope people don't, not want to come here because they've seen so much and think, you know.
Well, you're not, you're not a hundred percent guaranteed you're going to get your bail, so.
No.
I deleted my prime subscription because I was like, well, this is worthless here.
Well, we're still, you know, we're still in communication with them and, and they say that they're, that they have a plan. So, um. Let's see how they do. Yours. Yeah. Um, okay, great. So on their trustee interaction. So.
Um, I guess I just wanted to, well, I want to complete the discussion on IT. I, uh, see, I have some notes on that one. I. Wanted to ask, and again, if, I, I guess I might be appropriate here too, because I know it's just that decision. I mean, it's your hire or your decision, I think, although it would be a contract.
Change to go from any else to consulting and that's why I wanted to make sure.
Sure. Well, I, I mean, I think that's a fine idea, but would you supervise that person or how does that? Uh, are those people? And then if so, uh, seems like there could be several of them and. You probably want a lead person that you could go to to get what you need.
Yeah, and that would all probably be written in to the request or proposal of how that interaction would be. I would probably likely write in there that they attend at least, uh, one of the staff meetings per month. Just to get some representation and have, have that interface. All the team needs, uh, for any concerns. And then I have given some thought to, you know, write something in there about the point of contact that we would. I would interface with on a regular basis to just make sure that. So.
And can you tell me how many users this function supports? How many, I guess it's board, it's staff, it's?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably over fifty with, with trustees, I would assume. I don't have those stats yet from Michael.
It's about sixty to sixty-five.
People.
Including, uh, transitional.
Okay. All right.
But so, I'd be curious on, Michael doesn't have to answer now, I know he's listening, but I'd be curious just to, uh, know before he leaves his opinion on. On these two options, since he's the person that knows the most about this, so.
Yeah, and Michael in fact has looked at, uh, the scope, um, and done some brushing up on it for me. Michael, are you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, I'm listening, um.
Welcome to China.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, um, being a, I, it's unfair for me to say that I've been a one-man shop. Over the last four and a half years. over the last four and a half years because I have relied on vendor support. Um, so we do currently have relationships with vendors that help with our storage um, and server capacity. And then we have, um, another vendor that's, um, extremely important where, and I think I, I did a presentation to the board two years ago about our cybersecurity initiatives, uh, where we implemented a, a SEEM, um, application. And, uh, and it like, it evaluates like seven, this, the last two week period, it evaluated 17 million threats. Our potential threats to our organization. And, um, and we go through the process of addressing those. Um, so to, to answer your question, I don't, you still need someone on staff to manage, uh, day to day, to manage budget, things like that. And I don't know who on staff is going to handle that. If it's a consulting firm doing everything.
Um, Ted, how about other public meetings like this or the IT support to stay late or I don't know if the court proceedings need that as well or?
This one thing that I have added is specifically for the board of trustees. Because I think it's important to tell that, Michael, uh, you know, too, but I'd actually like some more right here with us um, to address any technical difficulties as well. But again, I don't know how you cover all that with one person in-house and that's kind of the rationale for, you know, having access to several people as a consultant. I don't truly have an idea of what those numbers look like unless I go through that process. Um, so because it is a change and because we go down that road. That's why I brought it to you. Cause I think it's something that, that we should weigh in on.
So how, how long would you expect the bid process to take?
So I would finish the bid package if you motion to approve or if you approved me going down that road, uh, I've given you the scope. So I would just finish the rest of, of the bid packet, which is mostly boilerplate, but there would be language in there about communication and how that project piece works and other requirements that we could have. And I would probably give it about two weeks. Or responses, two weeks at least. I mean, we would give that to applicants in-house too.
Maybe longer.
And then at that point we give the bids and review them. If possible, probably have a couple of people on staff, keep your own staff sit in on interviews if we need to. Are the number of proposals down and then come to you with the recommendation.
Okay.
So we're probably, I mean, it'll take maybe a month to two months. So, and, but I will say this, finding someone to replace Michael is going to take a lot as well because, you know, finding an expert like that here in the I D is, so can't say indefinitely, but you know, he does a lot. So.
What, um, what will happen between when Michael leaves and, and you would hire either a replacement for him or uh, a consultant? And, and I'm thinking here of, I don't remember all the specifics, but there are some pretty big technology needs in front of us as I recall, especially with the police station that the chief Morgan presented in the budget, uh, discussions.
So, uh, I am working on that piece. And talking with Michael on just the short term basis. Yeah. But in pieces of that, what he was really up to, uh, some men negotiation of that. And whether, how much he can take on because he is already in another position. But he has communicated with me as part of his resignation that, you know, if there's pieces of it handled on a limited basis, just to get us through transition.
And last, I'd just like to thank Michael wherever he is for your service and wish you the best going forward.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thanks Sue. Thank you Devon.
Leaps and bounds ahead of where we used to be.
It was like, eh, just camera or something.
Oh my God. Someone sent me a picture this week of me setting up the old trustee meeting. And, uh, yeah, it looks, it looks awesome right now looking at you guys on the, uh, on the video. So much.
Peter? You have any, uh, comments here?
No, not really. Uh, it was really good being you all at the Geo, GeoThermal event last week. I think there's some good promise there that actually brings movement and, you know, let me you mention this, but having, um, Fred, who's been working on this for like 25 years almost and actually see some light there is kind of also just exciting. See some really dedicated, should have.
Yeah, that's good. And I think, I think, uh, Peter is going to help with a small group of people to try to move that effort forward somewhat. I think that'll be easier than having a group of 40 trying to move it. So, good. Thank you. And Gina?
Uh, yeah, just, I agree. The GeoThermal meeting was great. Super interesting and exciting. Possibilities down the road, hopefully assuming we get the funding to put those test holes in and prove the concept. Fingers are crossed. Um, I also had the opportunity to, uh, attend a, uh, county water focus group for the, um, sustainable development plan. Um, and it was, is really neat. I actually just received the meeting notes and materials today and happy to share them with the group just so you can see what went on. But, um, it's a really good idea. It's just county wide and, um, creative stuff, just as, you know, things, things will get interesting. Uh, Sean was also on the, on the call, um, as well. So, um, yeah, lastly, just a, a big thank you to Michael as well for all the, all the work he's put into town. And so, um, and I, I very much enjoyed those cyber, uh, cyber attack emails. This is what I do.
I'm still good.
Yes, I'm tested. Yep. I found one the other.
I win every time.
But, um, but yeah, that's, that's all I have.
I always think, he still needs my help. It's never you. It's Michael.
I'm, that's all.
Devin?
Yeah. The, uh, GeoThermal thing was super interesting to attend and be a part of. Cool to have that in our future. Regardless of the tech stuff, I'm just curious to see what consulting would look like. And it sounds like it would be, we would need some kind of person here. So a staff wouldn't be taking up that role. And, you know, what would that look like? Would it be a local consulting firm? Would it be someone in the front range that we'd have to pay to drive up here, those kinds of things?
It could be something that we put in the scope of, of the RFP that there be a local, local point at least. Um, you know, Michael's not currently in town call either. He, he's in B B. Um, but and he goes from location to location. Um, so that piece wouldn't be much different if we were to request that. That they have a point contact.
Yeah. I'd be curious to know what other, uh, local municipalities are doing, whether it's county, Slaughter, Mudville or any of those. What are they doing for those kinds of things?
Yeah, I, I have reached out to them and they've given me the names of their, their consultants and have come with recommendations. Um, and so, but in the interest of creating a, uh, I think it's important that we do a proposal process. And in doing that, you know, to, there's more, we couldn't so source this because there's more than one in the area. So I think it's important that that be a part of the process.
Yeah. Yeah. And like, we're keeping, uh, police definitely having that conversation as well.
Yes.
As key players in, in the town staff as well. But I think as long as it, you know, I think as, as long as it keeps up with something that's as good, if not better than what Michael and his wizardry has been supplying us, then I think, I think that would be fine as long as it keeps up with the standard that we're, we're at.
Those standards can be broken to the scope. Way we communicate that. So all I have language in that.
Cindy?
Um, I think it would be good to have a, a per, um, IT person here and something, someone, a company that they consult with. Because using consulting, you might not exactly get the help as soon as you need it. Have an IT person here and having support for them. So they're not stretched. So then I think would be something that you would, that you can consider. Um, I'm going to go back to Elaine and Thomas Brown with their radon testing. Um, since that is such a health issue and it is a problem in our areas. Um, I don't think it would be bad to have, um, if a house sells radon testing is done, but to me, if it is such a health issue, why isn't it written into our code that when they build a home, when it, when it's cheaper to do it, when the foundation is there, why don't, why don't they just mitigate it at that time? So it never is a health issue. I mean, we worry about so many other things and people's health living in the mountains and that to me, that would just make sense. And why isn't that in a building code? They got codes for everything. You know, and, and to me that that would be something that nobody should have to worry about if it was dealt with at that point and it's not going to make house costs that much more. Yeah. And then the other thing that I wanted to say is that letter that you got from Mark um, during, if it's important enough to read in the meeting, I think that we should have got it in our packet. And I don't, I don't want to sound hateful about it or not, but, um, you can read something to me. Did I retain very much of that information? No, I need to refer back to it. So if it's something that's important enough that we're going to do in a meeting, if you get some from somebody, please put it in our packet. And I think we're all adults enough not to text up, you know, email off with everybody and abuse it, but, but it would have been nice to have been able to read it, read it.
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely agree with you on that. And especially someone who knows the, how it works here too. If, like, yeah.
Oh, I got. If he was listening, excuse me, Mark. He is not our planner anymore. You know, Joseph is. And so what he takes, just because he sent it and he's a planner, doesn't necessarily mean that it should affect our town to a whole degree. He owns a house here. He's not the, he's not the planner anymore. And I really like Mark. So I'm not, I'm not being negative there, but, but he doesn't hold the position anymore. He, he owns a house here.
Yeah, it would be nice if, if Mark, if you're listening. It would be nice if we had the information at a time. You can always send that to, to Paula. Or, you know, Paula is the one that puts the packet together. Um, you're familiar with our timelines, usually the Thursday prior is, is a good time to do that. Um, and that's probably a better way of reaching all of, of, of the board, um, with these things. This is the second time this has happened actually.
And even if it's last minute, Paula has been real good at sending those kind of things out to us. So.
Yeah. And it's important too. I mean, this is probably the last, it sounds like it was the last minute email. But, you know, that deadline is, is pretty important to Paula.
There's no reason.
We can amend and amend and, and it gets, it gets, it's, it's tough when you got things coming in constantly. You gotta amend that packet. It's not as easy as it looks because you gotta renumber all the pages. It, it's a deal. So, but, uh, we do when we need to and it's necessary. But, uh, it's always important to stick to that Thursday deadline if we can.
Something like Devin said, you know, if an email comes in, because we've done that in the past, when an email comes in, I go ahead.
Yeah, like on Monday.
I'll to everybody else. So like going forward, like Linda was the only one, you know, she could have sent it to me and stuff, depending on the time. Cause I think you said you got it this afternoon.
Yeah. Yeah. I just saw it right.
You know, we still try to get that out as soon. And then we do archive all those records. So when you have a chance, I'll have you forward that to me.
Okay.
Sounds like you may want to forward it to all of the board members. So they have a chance to.
Yeah, it is already.
You're good to proceed forward and just keep it in that packet record.
Okay.
Okay.
If I think of that.
Yeah, you know, but like you say, he's not our planner. But I will forward this letter.
I, uh, I spaced and I, um, I also went to the, sent, the EDC hosted, which was a really cool event. Um, doing some amazing things. It's fun to see the new cohorts that have been inducted for the year. Um, and their next one would be an ABL at the serve. Um, and also to hear stories, a little bit about people in the past, their past cycle. But that was a pretty cool experience. So, but yeah.
Thanks.
Guys do a good job. Spaced on that. All the events.
Okay. Anybody else? Staff, any comments you'd like to make?
We need to follow up on the tank. The funding on that, because I know we rolled that over to trustee staff.
You know, if you were to just say, if it's under that threshold of those, you know, top number there, I think we could cover it and figure out a, a way to where that's going to come from in the budget. So. We do have the community foundation that we give money to. Phil, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, we've fully allocated that. And we actually just paid that today to the community foundation, $55,000. So, um, if the board is interested in proving a, uh, a top end amount for this, um, that's okay. But I asked for that in a motion so that I can track it as a budget amendment. Cause there is no other spot in the budget for this.
Maybe like $5,000 or?
It's three, 3,400.
Uh, so the numbers real quick.
Other costs maybe.
I'd feel like I'd rather have some kind of more information before we approve the number. So it seems like there's a lot of things that are still up in the air on what's going on.
The transportation is, is kind of a wild card, but, um, he's figured the transportation costs into what he's given. So if it's going to be anyway, it's going to go less. Um, so you could just, um, advise us, make a motion to approve, uh, on a prorated basis according to the figures that we've received from Brian. No more than 4,200. 4,258, 71, which is the top.
The top one.
It sounds like Paj's already committed to 7,000 or they have?
They have. That's what he said. So we don't need so much of them. Um, they've already improved that in their budget. So we could just say, well, we're only willing to do the 34, 48, 99. So you could also make a motion to no more than 34, 48, 99, excuse me.
Important to support it. Our growth for this town has been good. But sometimes we forget some of the important things in our country. The American Legion and the vets. I mean, they're the reason we're here. We, we need to support them. I'm all for supporting at the lowest figure possible. Paj's paying seven, but I I think that we, I think that we should support it. All the American Legion has done for our communities, uh, DFW. How many thousands of dollars have they given? How many thousands of dollars have they given our kids over the years for? My words are leaving me, their college. Their scholarships and what they've done for the Boy Scouts and I just think it's for what all they do for our community that. We should support them, and I realize it's not a small amount of money, but it's not a large amount of money. It, I think it is very doable for us as a town to do that.
So in that case, shouldn't we, if we want to move forward and support it? Look to, because you're looking for just approval, so if you can move forward, you can move forward, so we want the higher-end one. Like amount, that way you have flexibility if it's.
If you wanted it, and then it at least is, as he said, something we could track, which would be helpful.
Because we also don't know what SLADA wants to do, right?
We don't, I don't know that we necessarily do, they've asked us for money. I haven't communicated this wasn't something that we had in our budget, so. They understand that, you know, we're kind of going out all of that here to. To transport us, and so, because we haven't really budgeted for it, I think maybe I could get what they can. It sounded like most of you were wanting to do that prorated. Based on our population, so this just gave you a better figure for that, and I think the forum when they were looking at it was more. Like five thousand, that was without transportation, right, so, you know. If we're doing it based on this prorated, then it's just up to them to run with the rest.
Well, then I'll make the motion to approve. About four thousand dollars for, there's that extra buffer in case of something, but we hope it'll be the lower number for. The name of the tank.
Forty-one, but you can just say the tank for the American.
Yes, the tank for the American, yes.
Do you want to approve four thousand or up to four thousand?
I said, uh, I said up to four thousand, I think, just so there's an extra buffer in case of something.
I'll second that.
Here we have the Crete Row. Okay, is that roll call? Okay.
Trusty Hilton Hinka.
Yes.
Trusty the Crete.
Yes.
Trusty Row.
Yes.
And Trusty Swisher.
Yes.
And I guess I'm a little more comfortable, I know we all talked about the consulting, but are you privy to go ahead and go with the packet out? For consulting with IT.
Just a quick question on that, if, if you do the RFP. And you're not, I mean, as you go through that process, you could, you could still just instead hire someone.
If I find this is not productive, I don't. Based on what we get back.
Okay.
I, I feel like you're not gonna fit the bill and it won't, I will call other people. To review this as well, that are on my key step. You know, then I would consider bringing out as an in-house position, but I really, it's, it's. We do it that way, it's just one person. And I, I realize that Michael works with vendors as well, but. I suspect that you're gonna get a little bit more for your. I will make sure, though, I have written down all your concerns for communication, project management, having a POC. And then also making sure there's a local requisite requirement to someone that's on site.
And I, I guess I just think the other consideration, it's going to fall on at least one person, likely you, but maybe others, to actually supervise this. This group, so that's a, that's a workload add there, which I mean, I know that you probably supervise Michael too, but.
Yeah.
It's a little more far-flung, a, a contract management, really.
It will fall on others to manage the budget, manage. Replenishment of workstations, things like that.
I think we have an item in there for inventory tracking. So I think that piece is covered. I think the. The theme will be if there's someone local. And that can be written into the contract.
Good to have you, you know.
That seems to be the biggest concern, if it's someone local and you're working with them, then I'm supervising them, whether they're consultants or not. If you would like, we can, I could bring the whole bid draft bid package back on, on the fourteenth, but I, I really feel like this is gonna be.
I think you've kind of given us the guts of it.
Okay, yeah, good. We want to move quickly. That's the key here, is we want to expedite this as quickly as we can, so, but we also like it.
Do we need a motion, or are you okay with that?
I would prefer a motion if possible. Okay, so let's see if we can approve. Putting together a bid package, because I would probably come to you with that bid package, but I don't want to delay this. I've got the scope work that I've inserted for you, that's the guts of it. Jeff, is that what you would recommend?
Yep, that works. Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion for you to. Put together, propose a bid package. For a consultant.
There's a second for that?
A second.
Okay, Swisher, Cobb. And. Good, I don't think we, is it, who is it, how many are in favor of it?
I.
Anyone opposed? I just kind of, it's on the edge of us micromanaging. The administration.
I've opened it up for that.
Okay.
I appreciate your direction. I do think it's a big enough change from where we've been at that I'm.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or trustee interaction? Okay, then I would accept the motion that we go into executive session. Second, and this will be to hold a conference with the town's attorney. To receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to Colorado by statute. Section twenty-four dash six dash. Certain postal service issues in town. So I'd like for us to take a five-minute break. Is there a, so we have a, is that Row made the motion? And Cobb. So all in favor of going into the executive session? Anybody opposed? Let's take a five-minute break. Time is nine fifty. No, nine fifty-eight, sorry.